Check for sure.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It's Wednesday, April 20th. Open up for visitor comments.
Tina, did you want to speak?
Yes, um, thank you very much. I wanted to just alert you to some information on a vote that we want to proceed with purchasing. And the information is in your, is in your folder. Hopefully you'll have a chance to read that and then I can come back this evening and see if there's any questions or feel free to send me some questions or anything like that that isn't in that packet that you'd like to know. Also, I wanted to just congratulate Mohammed Zahir on his achievement award, which is really kind of awesome. And also let you know that we're getting the tram completed. There's a few things, a few little gaskets and things that we're having worked on. And then we'll be taking it over to Lively to do a final like inspection. And perhaps have the city, the city mechanics take a look at it too. It's got an incredible braking system on it. So it's, uh, you know, it actually corresponds to the weight and has different adjustments. So we're kind of getting familiar with that so that we'll be able to train people properly for those who are going to be driving it in the future. Did anyone have any questions?
I think that's a great idea, Tina. We'll talk about it later. Give everybody a chance to review what you've given us and then we'll talk about tonight.
All right. Thanks so much.
Okay, any other visitor comments? All right. So I have an employee length of service here for two officers today. Five years, AJ Boswell, Officer Boswell. And then Adam Hartless, also five years. So I want to congratulate those two young fine officers out there working our city streets and thank them for their service. So obviously there may be working. And so we appreciate their efforts out there. Okay, let's go on to our next item, which is a presentation from CASA for Children. Paige Diaz, supervisor.
Yes, should I?
Yes, come on up.
Well, my name is Paige Diaz and this is just an informational kind of session we wanted to share with you, kind of some statistics for our county and our program. And so if there are any specific questions, this is kind of our general orientation. So there might be some pieces in the presentation that I'll skip through, but we just wanted to inform you about what we're doing in the community. Skip the first one. If you're not aware of what CASA stands for, it's Court Appointed Special Advocate. Sorry, we're on the next one. Yeah. And so as a CASA, we are legal parties to the case. So we are not attorneys. These are trained volunteers. But we essentially act as attorneys kind of in court for children. So we also have a program attorney we are affiliated with Multnomah, Washington, Columbia County independently before CASA was its own individual program within Columbia County, but then in 2014 that ceased and they were with Multnomah, Washington, Columbia. The CASA program started in 1977 in King County, Washington. There was a judge out of that state that really saw the need and value of having an individual that wasn't, that was solely representing that child. We know that children can have multiple attorneys, multiple caseworkers involved with their case. So really somebody that has that overarching commitment to a child in care. So that started in 1977 and then in Multnomah County, that was, that began in 1986 and then Columbia County was affiliated with Washington and Multnomah in 2015. So our mission is to advocate for the best interests of abused, neglected children who are in custody of the state and under the protection of the court. We dedicate our resources to recruiting, training and supporting citizen advocates to provide quality advocacy to as many children as we can. And so just a little bit about the legal designation. You know, parents' attorneys and children's attorneys are going to advocate for whatever their client expresses. But the legal designation for a CASA is what is in the child's best interest. So this might not always line up with, you know, what a parent or child is wanting. So that, that's what makes us a little bit different necessarily than an attorney. And our main roles are to investigate, advocate, facilitate and monitor. So that's really what we work with our advocates on. And then just a little bit of statistics about Columbia County. We currently have 50 active CASAs. We are serving 89 children, 89 children with CASA. So there might be more than one children on a particular case. We currently have 10 children on our waitlist. And we have a training coming up in May that we have four volunteers that are signed up for and they'll have a training in June as well. We are really excited to kind of announce that we're doing a pilot project specifically for Columbia County. The statute, federal statute for CASA says that every child is has access to a CASA or should have an CASA, should have a CASA. As you can imagine, it's really finding volunteers. People and people that are also qualified to be CASA advocates. So we are excited to announce that with our pilot program, we have approached the judges to be appointed to every case in Columbia County. So even existing cases. So the numbers that we will be serving will be going up as their hearings are coming up within, without, throughout the year. So we're really excited about that to be able to announce that. Myself, our program manager that's here, Karen Miller, and our other staff, Jacqueline Curry, we will be monitoring the cases until the point that we can actually put an advocate on each case. So we're really excited about that. And hoping some of the other county, larger counties can follow suit to what we're doing here in Columbia County. And then a couple of other things I just wanted to share is you know, kind of some of our core beliefs as an organization. CASA for Children recognizes the inherent benefits of reunification and believes that every parent should be given a chance to be healthy and safe for their children. And we know that with a lot of studies that generally, generally children do better with their birth families than they do, you know, with, within other places in the system. CASA for Children believes that child abuse and neglect are rooted in systemic oppression and that the system tasked with helping those families can and has often caused additional harm. CASA for Children believes every child has a right to a safe, stable, healthy home and dedicated loving attention. And so we know there are a lot of volunteer opportunities within the community. And so just a few pieces on why CASA and why we're such a great organization. So you have a direct impact on a case as a CASA. You get to have a voice in court. You get to write a report to the judge, that's part of legal documentation advocating for what's in the best interest of a family and child. Again, we are there as an advocate for, for the child. But we know that sometimes helping advocate for a parent helps the child. And so, you know, you also, as a CASA, have supervision from, from staff, which is really great. We have a great group of CASAs here in Columbia County that we're really proud of. You also can provide one-on-one attention to a, to a child and family that maybe some other volunteer opportunities may not have. And really having that consistency, consistency with a child and helping to show what a secure, attached relationship does. And so, you know, there are a lot of studies that show for children who have had a high ACE score, adverse childhood experience score, that having a consistent adult within their life advocating can be very helpful. There is a video that you can get to if you'd like to, we don't have to watch it right now, but it is very interesting on Dear CASA. As far as requirements for our volunteers, you're required to visit child, your child once a month, attend meetings and hearings that might come up within the case. Staying in touch with the supervisor, with your supervisor, writing reports. We do 12 hours of continuing education a year. Generally one, each case lasts one to two years. It just depends. And also just working with a great team. Like I said, out here, we have some really great volunteers and great program staff that are just really passionate about about this work. And, and you know, we do see it as helping a child and family immediately with what they're dealing with. But this program, this organization, it's really investing in our community and hoping that these, you know, children and families that are involved with our system can get the support to be better citizens later on. And we don't have as much as that, of that systemic representation within child welfare. And so just kind of moving forward, like I said, this is an informational meeting. We are going to be having a daytime training in May with at least four advocates. We also have a training in June and Karen Miller, our program manager, does the interviews and all of our, all of our volunteers do have a background check and are vetted. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. We're just really trying to kind of get the, the word about our program and about the opportunity. We're going to be having a booth at the fair and hopefully reindeer days and some other local events, just trying to kind of get knowledge about the program and hopefully help our community kind of get invested with children that are here. You know, these are kids that are in Portland or somewhere else. These are children and families that are in our community. And so being able to really kind of invest in that, we're really excited about.
When I first came to St. Helens, CASA is one of the first interesting organizations that I was attracted to. And I am sitting on our board and I have to say that it was one of the most rewarding experiences that I, I've ever had. Working with not only the board, but with the, with the caseworkers and the individuals that are here. I'm curious, how many volunteers do you have at this point?
So we currently have 50 that have active cases. There's probably close to a handful that are kind of taking a little bit of a break before they take another case. And then we will have four for our May training and we're not sure the numbers yet for June. So we have, I mean, we have built our program. I think when I, I've actually been a CASA advocate. I was an advocate first before I was an employee of CASA. And I think we had around 30 at that time and that's been almost four years ago. So our program has grown. I myself would have been able to work on four different cases with nine total children in Columbia County. I currently have two cases, which you're not really supposed to do, but I am doing that right now. And so I'm, I'm, you know, I really see that as being able to also build support for families that maybe didn't, don't have community support. Or other, you know, family members that are just there supporting them when they're going through a hard time. So it's really, you know, it is helping in the immediate concern for families that are involved in child welfare. But it's also, I view it as really helping our community and kind of help, you know, I, I don't know of any other volunteer opportunities that have that same reach, which is you know, exciting for me. And I'm, I myself am training up my, my three young girls to hopefully be CASA advocate, advocate someday to be able to give back. So.
Do you have any noteworthy fundraisers in the community?
So that's a great question. So we do have a whole development team that's within Portland. We don't have any direct, you know, necessarily development opportunities that are happening within Columbia County right now, but we have a site that folks can go to if they are so inclined. You know, all of our, our staff is paid, but our volunteer, you know, all the other work we do is, is volunteer. So yeah.
So I had all of the mirrors and I, I was late. And I was hoping that the length of service would recognize, sorry, it was that would go on longer. Anyway, I was just really glad to get communication with Paige to this. And I want to take a little, maybe give some more background to the history of CASA in the county. Once upon a time, some 25 people, I was one of the first CASAs volunteers in the county. Now, at that time, it was run by the Boys and Girls Aid Society out of Portland. And then here in the county, Jan Kennon, it was with the, we had children and family commissions. And it was her desire to try to get an independent CASA program here in Columbia County. And I was tapped to write a grant for the national, the national CASA organization, won it and became the first director of an independent Columbia County CASA program. I don't know. Maybe we had half a dozen. I don't, I don't know. But that's also the time it became a full-time teacher. I left that. My office actually was at the old school. I'm under the portable that was used for music next to the little, the building that's still there. That was the school district offered that as an office. We did do a training. But then I handed that on and it went through several iterations, Northwest Regional. Steve took it on, housed it, et cetera, et cetera. And then I'm not sure how many years after that, I was persuaded to join the board. And the day I and a couple of new other people joined the board, the majority of the board members left the board. I, I think, I don't know, Brady was, Brady was the chair. Brady was the chair. Okay. So I, I never, okay, maybe I got, anyway, anyway. So lots of struggles. What we found was really hard to maintain this independent program. So not only, so I was on both ends. Creating an independent Columbia County CASA program, also being worked at, shut it down. And then it was then it was taken over through various iterations. And, and so wow, I mean, 50. That's incredible. And it does sort of the great work you're doing and the, the work that we need to continue to do. I'm a teacher and although none of my students are represented by CASAs, I know that at school, throughout the school district, what a, just a wonderful, wonderful service you do provide. So I, I know that all, I, I will speak for all the councils here. We do everything in our power to promote, promote the program verbally. And I would maybe even hope in some way we could get some plug in our, our official communication crystal or something. I don't know if we can do that, but just to raise awareness of this, this kind of, this kind of thing. So yeah, I'm glad we're finally able to get you to come here and great presentation. And it's just so exciting. What you're doing and it looks like you're continuing to do. And as Councilman Morton.
Well spoken, Patrick.
As Councilman Morton asked about fundraising, I don't know, maybe somebody would be helping, would be willing to get involved with local fundraiser to to build awareness. So.
Well, we appreciate that. We will never say no to money, of course. You know, I just, I'm not on that side of things. Like Warren, doing the actual work. I just, just wanted to bring awareness, like you said, and I just appreciate all of your time and, and your past involvement as well with CASA. So.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a fascinating history of how our county, you know, county work and of course, I think Columbia County liked to be dependent and independent of the metro region. But in this case, it seems that dependency is working in our favor. I mean, I couldn't see we would be having 50 if we had just been relying on our own services. So thank you so much for what you look for, for the entire community of Columbia County.
Well, and I've got to see your guys' work firsthand. I'm the drug court counselor. So I've seen you guys in the drug courtroom and it's really important work and it's great advocacy. So thank you, guys.
I have a simple question. What sparked CASA getting involved? Cause I heard you say that you will be eventually getting all the cases.
Yes.
So what was the current process of CASA getting involved?
So the previous process really was, you know, a judge, when they first were getting a, a case into, you know, children are first removed in that first court hearing. Because most of our judges did not really know what our capacity was, they would really assign kind of the trickier, tougher cases. That's the way they would assign a CASA. And so now we have this communication with our judges that every new case that comes into care, we will be assigned to. And then we just, we get a weekly, look at the weekly docket for dependency cases and kind of cross-reference to see if we are not already monitoring that case. And so we will, myself, Jacqueline Curry, or Karen Miller, our program manager, will be at those hearings and we will ask the judge, judge to assign us to that case. And so.
DHS, are you involved in these as well? Any other question? Because you, my question is about the 10 children that are on the waitlist.
Yes. So those.
Nobody's making sure that these kids are not.
Yes.
They just have a different perspective.
Right.
Yes. So those, so those children are represented. So yes, they have a caseworker, they have an attorney. But they don't have, I mean, DHS is looking out for their best interest, but they don't have a legal statute of, you know, this is what's in their best interest, like a CASA. Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have worried.
Great question. That's a great question. Yeah, but yes, yeah, they get the DHS or whatever. The one thing is that the CASA is on the kid. And we want, and, and everybody wants to be able to do that, but the CASA is not bound by the administrative bureau.
Yes, we're not. And it's, it's very nice to be able to, you know, as a CASA, when you meet a, a parent saying, hey, I don't work for the state. I'm not employed for the state. I'm here to help your child. And that really is, is helpful because like I said, there, the child is our main advocacy, but helping a parent and advocating for a parent to get what they need also helps the child. And so those cases that are on the waitlist are being monitored by the three of us currently. And so it's not like they don't have anyone looking, like some of the other ones do. But they just don't have a specific CASA assigned, which I'm, I'm working daily to recruit more folks in our community. So.
I feel a lot better.
Good. I'm sorry. I will say anything they want to.
I would just add that when a child has a CASA, that's their one case. That's their focus. Where DHS has a lot going on. Attorneys have multiple cases. This gives the child a person who may notice things that they missed or, you know, because they're so busy. So and then also when a child has a CASA, they spend a lot, it's proven fact that they spend a lot less time and care.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably.
And, and they have less, less placement changes, which can be very disruptive. You know, there are a lot of, you know, kind of statistics about, like I said about children, you know, ACE childhood, adverse childhood experience scores that can, can affect, you know, physical health in adulthood, that those go down. And so that's why I, this opportunity is, is unlike some other volunteer opportunities. Because I don't know that they necessarily have that long reach into the future for our community. And, you know, like I said, these are children in our community. This isn't some, in somebody else's backyard. This is our backyard. These are our kids. These are future adults. You know, that are going to be future adults in our community. So it's really important work and it, there are tough topics at times, but it's really, it's very fulfilling, fulfilling work. So.
All right.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And if there's anybody that, you know, that you feel like would be a good CASA or you'd like more information, please. I love talking about this. So I can talk about it all day long. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Wonderful program. Okay, our next item on the Enterprise Zone sponsor, we're going to reach full solutions. Paul Vogel, executive director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, councilors. For the record, Paul Vogel, Executive Director, Columbia Economic Team. And I'm here today with Mr. Kevin Wick, who's the founder, president of Control Solutions, which is a local St. Helens business. The Control Solutions qualified, recently expanded, built a new building, expanded their workforce. And applied for Enterprise Zone benefits. And they qualified. They, they met the, the wage threshold. They met the, the hiring threshold, which as you recall, you must increase employment by 10%. Kevin increased it by 30, which is great. They've signed their, their resource hiring agreement. And what else have you done? You've done, purchased the equipment. Purchased all the equipment. And what they do is interesting. Is they make data loggers for, originally for monitoring vaccines, which has been rather robust the last couple of years, as you can imagine. And this all occurred as he was planning, planning to expand. And you might think to yourself, well, geez, it's, you know, it's, it's been gravy years and all of that. Which, they have been good years and they're good, strong years, but now in order to maintain that and grow forward, that's the challenge. The other thing that they found is, and I should really let Kevin speak for himself, but a lot of competitors entered the sector during, during the pandemic. And so what, what Kevin is, is doing now is diversifying and applying his, his products to others, other sectors. Museums, farm-to-table, other, other temperature sensitive and control applications. And so he's, he's requested an extension, two-year extension on the Enterprise Zone to assist him with his cash flow and for his, his marketing and his growth to move into those other sectors. So that, that really is the nature of, of his letter of request. And we're supporting that request and requesting authorization by these own sponsors for a two-year extension on his standard Enterprise Zone exemption.
I think that's awesome that you have continued to build your business here in St. Helens. You've expanded by 30%, not to say that's a threshold that we require for suspension. And yeah, it's a tough, it's something like a tough industry to be in at the time when everybody jumped in and you found a way to overcome that. And we, this is a mechanism that helps support you and your business. So that's what it's designed for.
Yeah, I'm really going to, you know, grow the business more. I still have plenty of land on that piece of property to, to build another, you know, facility, whether it be a other calibration lab or more warehousing or whatever. So, you know, we're still, we're still going. So.
And where, where is your facility?
Industrial Way.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
Big building right there.
So Paul referred to the, the data.
Data logger.
Data logger. So okay, to, to lay an explanation of what, what that data logger is and how it helps.
So basically it's a, a device, digital device that takes a time and date stamp and a temperature recording. Stores it in whatever format user wants, CSV, PDF, whatever it might be. They're able to, you know, download that data. If there's any temperature excursions, power outages, you know, we have devices that will send out automatic alerts. So while some of these hospitals and clinics have, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of vaccines and medicines in these refrigerators, you know, we'll notify them right away. Let them know that, you know, if somebody left the door open, power was out, so that they save these vaccines.
So this would, this would be any kind of vaccine medicine. And then, but did it also involve like the, I know some, some of the COVID vaccines had required those super cold. Was also your, your, your product was used to?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's like.
Well, I hear you. You were talking about farm to table, and say, hey, my stuff is dated, although the entire way from my farm to you. Control Solutions monitored it, and we have the timestamp, when it left, what degree, everything to that point. And it never changed to get there. So you can't blame us because your meat spoiled.
That's right. Yeah, anything to do with uh, preservation, uh, you know, whether it's tissue, blood, R and D stuff, implants. Uh, you know, all that stuff is, is temperature sensitive.
And national and international reach.
We don't go too far internationally, uh, Virgin Islands, Guam, that kind of stuff. But, uh, yeah, all across the US, yeah.
So my question is, um, you said that, you know, business has been pretty robust, so I'm curious maybe some of the problems that you're facing, why we need to extend it?
Well, like Paul said, um, anyone that had a data logger that was not in our industry, you know. Became a competitor to us. Uh, we had huge supply chain issues. I don't know if you guys heard about the, the microchip shortages, you know, auto plants shutting down and stuff.
Right.
You know, lead times for some of the components went from, you know, three weeks to six months to nine months to eighteen months. And so, you know, we had a huge backlog where we couldn't fill orders. Somebody was supplying these, these products, you know, at the time, so. You know, now we need to, of course, that diversify. Uh, we had certain states locked up. Uh, where they purchased product exclusively from us, and they have since, you know, bought other products during this time period because they took what was available. Uh, so now it's, you know, how do we get into these other industries, you know? To base, you know, this year's budget on last year's performance. Uh, you know, so it's, it's. Last couple of years, yeah, great, but trying, of course, now trying to, to keep up with that. Hey, all the new employees that I hired.
I'm glad, uh, so glad you found a location in St. Helens. I know that when you first came to the community, maybe six years ago or so, uh, not you, probably the founder. Uh, was had nightmares looking for a facility to create your product and, and, and go forward. I am so happy that you found a place and thank you, Paul. So, uh, I had great conversations with your, your founder and uh. Tried desperately to uh, do what Paul was doing. And I know, I know firsthand how. Tough that is to look for something when you don't have the expertise of looking for things. So it, it's, uh, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. Yeah, that was just, uh, and I was looking at some additional properties, uh, or through real estate, commercial properties. And, you know, our current lease space, our old lease space was, you know, no rent facility there. And just have the, you know, just walk out the back door and I look out there and I go, I'm just gonna ask him one more time if it's something. I went down to his office and uh, say, Mr. Dog, you know, he's saying that, he goes, okay. So, you know, alright, so, so there we went, so, yeah, it was a fortunate.
What's the life of operation of your device?
Yeah, I mean, usually, uh, I mean, technology is, is really the key factor. Uh, you know, went from like a USB device where people were downloading the information to a computer directly to wifi, so now we're going. Cellular, so we can have, you know, GPS tracking and stuff like that. Uh, but probably two to five years somewhere in there.
Okay, but the time I put it on a product and put a new battery in it, how long do I go before it runs out?
Before the battery runs out? Um, yeah, a year and a half or so. And then we have permanently, you know, powered devices, so you plug them into the, into the wall as well.
But obviously food running down a truck needs a battery.
Yeah, 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 no, we've got stuff that'll last over, you know, over a year.
All right, uh, obviously you're also affected by some of the new government rules on how ship, how things are shipped that they require. Has that been a big effect on your company?
Um, not too much. Uh, the batteries that we, we source are uh, generally safe for air transportation.
I'm wondering about new business. Uh, all of a sudden the government says anybody's shipping green bananas is gonna have it, or you know. The government adds new regulations. Does that play into your business very much?
Well, regulation uh, is, is good for us in some ways. Uh, whether they, because uh. Prior to two thousand and eighteen, the CDC did not have a requirement to have a data logger on a vaccine refrigerator freezer. It was recommended that you do it, but all they had to do was write down the temperature twice a day on a piece of paper. So after hours, holidays, weekends, nobody's monitoring that stuff. You know, so when that regulation came in twenty eighteen, this mandated, hey, you have to have a data logger. You know, to ensure that your vaccines are safe and viable for people. So, you know, in a way, it's good for us. Has been some regulation for um. Cold storage transportation for, for foods and stuff like that, so. The benefits is in some way.
You're, you are at the end of that government stick also.
Just exciting uh, that this is happening, especially as we look forward to the development of our, our new business park. And attracting businesses to have someone, you're, like you and your business here as uh, showing that St. Helens is uh. Is open for business and uh, expansion and bringing in folks, so.
Well, this is on for tonight on our, our work, our regular session, so uh. But yeah, it's just neat that you were able to get that property, uh, home based now, you. Hopefully this will help in your endeavors and uh, in the expansion in the future. So appreciate Kevin and uh, you for.
We're really pleased to, you know, we don't always get a chance to bring the uh, the business in. Let you, let you meet him and see him, see him face to face. And, you know, Kevin's pretty presentable, so. But it's just good to know what's going on in the community.
Yeah.
You know, it was, it was uh, really uh, nice to have that letter uh, from the dancing people that, that were looking at the Armstrong property.
As well, yeah.
We have planning meetings scheduled for tomorrow, so.
Excellent, excellent. So I wonder something coming into our area. Yeah, yeah. Father, son, it was father, sons.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think they're, uh, they're on site today. And I think they were able to schedule some meetings tomorrow, get the pre-app stuff started, so.
Yeah. Good work, Paul.
Thank you. One, one other quick update is, uh, yesterday, uh, we got, uh, received from Congressman Bonamici. The figurative final check, uh, hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the SBDC. And we pointed out at the time, and I bring it up now because St. Helens was the first check in. So it's done. Jason's out working and onboarding and he's got eight clients. So thank you, thank you for setting the tone early on, because the rest of the cities, as you know, sometimes they do. Was it what else still? Well, you stepped up it. Thank you. Thanks very much.
So, um, this is the. Planning seminar annual report, spring two thousand twenty-two edition. Thank you for having us. Uh, we're gonna start this with uh, Jenny, so our associate planner and.
Yeah, so we're gonna um, go through a couple of projects that we're just updating. These were in our last report, but we. We've worked on some of them, and the first one is the industrial business park. Um, so we've kicked off this project. Um, as you may know, Mackenzie is designing the phase one, just the red in that map. Infrastructure. Um, we've had a couple stakeholder meetings, including one with PGE about um. Improving the power station out there, the substation. Um, so that project is moving forward. We're also kicking off the phase two in blue, the site preparation work. Um, so we're wanting to design and permit. Um, some grading work out there and make those more developable, so that, that project's moving forward. Um, and I'm assisting, obviously, a group, a team of people on this project. It's massive, you know, public works stepping in, John's, John's involved. Um, so this is a joint project. So next slide. So Riverwalk Phase One, um, since our last report, we've added the playground scope of work. Um, so before we were kind of leaving the playground area untouched. Um, but now we've kind of added that scope so that the playground will include some new equipment and also expand into the former veneer site. Um, we also completed the Columbia Park expansion permitting. Um, so the, you know, the park has been expanded to one point six acres now. Um, you may remember that helps with SDC eligibility to help fund the project. Uh, so, so that's all moving forward. Uh, again, this is a joint project, we're looking at public works on this and John specifically. Um, so excited to move that forward. Soon you'll see some sixty percent design for Riverwalk Phase One that includes that playground work. So we'll look at the park cohesively, um, and then keep, keep going to construction. So next slide. Uh, the Bennett Building, um, you might remember the windows were replaced, um, in a year now, probably. Um, we approved some parapet roofing improvements, um, and the parapet is just. Uh, it's kind of this membrane that comes around the building and it wasn't installed fully right, it wasn't sealed, so birds were getting in nesting. That work's been done, it just hasn't been um, inspected, uh, but we're very close to wrapping that project up. Um, this is partly funded by the um, certified local government program through SHIPO. Um, so we, this is grant funded. Um, that project is almost done. So next slide. So the Food Bank, um, you all know it's been a major improvement to the facade out there. I think it ended up looking really nice. Um, we are so close to getting final occupancy on this project. Um, I kind of have some final, final budget numbers. Um, because of construction cost increases related to COVID, um, and delays, you know, delays in projects like this. Your soft costs increase because you're just, you know, continuing to monitor the project. Um, but the Food Bank has contributed. They were originally going to contribute a hundred and fifty thousand to the one point five million dollar grant, and it's up to about five hundred thousand. Is their contribution to the project, just to make it happen. Um, and so we're. Thank goodness the Food Bank is good at fundraising and has a lot of volunteers that work tirelessly to, to fill that gap. Um, but yeah, there, this project is so close to being done and I'm really excited to be.
So about inflation about eight percent, it's about five, eight percent.
And the grant, I think, it's been like three or four years since the budget was created, so it's just increased, so, yeah.
One of the things that I've noticed on this, on that slide, the um. And what the reality of the building is, is that there's no awnings. And uh, I talked to the director who was uh, ahead of the finances, that something had to go.
Yeah.
And hopefully, in the future, they're going to try to find some funds for awnings, because that's kind of the. Kind of the, the uh, kind of standard in that area.
That's our Main Street corridor, yeah.
Exactly.
Um, and I think, you know, like, pro- projects this big always kind of go through that value engineering step, like where can we cut costs? And unfortunately, you know, an awning isn't a functional improvement inside, so that was one of the first things to go.
Yeah, then it has, didn't have a whole lot to do with function.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of just put on the back burner, but I, I think it's, I think it's there and it's their initial plan.
One other problem that has come with that building is the drainage on the uh. One side, the curb and the water is actually running into the building in heavy rain. There's no drain. On that whole street between this corner and next one back. Is any plans on fixing that?
Yeah, so the water that's getting inside the building, um, J H Kelly, the contractor, put together a change order request. That will install a private French drain along the driveway apron where it slopes into the building. Um, and they believe that will feed into their private connection into the city's system on Columbia.
Because the puddle goes halfway past the other building next to.
So this, the fix will keep water out of the building. It won't fix the, the water that is ponding in the public right away. Um, only public infrastructure would fix that.
Yeah, well, there, there's a huge amount in the street. Here's one of those streets that is above the sidewalk. Now you have, in the next street back, you have put a wheelchair or eighty-eight approach to the curb. And then stops right there at the, the old telephone company. Then it's basically dirt up to this building in the backside. West at Fourteenth Street.
Yes. What's your fix?
The street and the curb has got to be redone, regraded, and it needs a storm drain. There is no storm drain in that street there.
Yeah, I'm sure it's on Mohammed's to-do list, that he's.
Yes. But no, that, that's a, that's a, a major problem there.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't disagree with you. I think the public infrastructure in that area is deficient. Um.
Yeah, at least the emergency, the uh, drain in front of the, well, door. At least gets some out of it. It doesn't get rid of the people going through that puddle beyond there.
One thing this project did that was a huge benefit to the storm and sewer system was this building wasn't connected to the public system. All of that roof was going straight into sewer. So this project already did a major improvement. Um, into the system, but yeah, I, I agree, there are additional improvements that would help.
When was the original building put in?
I don't remember. Um, I think that maybe the forties, but don't quote me on that.
Let me tell you, probably about right.
So there were really no regulations, and there wasn't a whole lot around it in the forties either.
Yeah, I mean, there's, if things were all perfect in St. Helens, I, yeah.
Jenny, what's it like tracking these uh, these community block? I mean, you've done a couple now.
Phew, I've done one and.
I thought you had done one before this too, no?
Uh, no, there's talks about an additional one that the city may help manage, you, um, pass a resolution for it. Uh, I think it's Riverside was looking into one. They, there's a reason that you hire a grant administrator, and that's in addition to the administration that I've done from the city side. Um, you know, we're paying coal pack to do all of the labor monitoring, because it's a fair labor project, you got to make sure prevailing wages met. Um, but it's, this federal money, you just end up spending a lot on administration that you wouldn't have otherwise spent. Yeah. It was, it was uh, definitely an eye-opening project for me. Yeah. Not saying I wouldn't do it again.
Yes.
A million and a half is a huge contribution for the city. Yeah, yeah.
A million of its paperwork.
About five hundred thousand of it.
I mean, it's, a- and it's time-consuming in the weirdest way. It's not an easy flow.
Yeah, yeah, I wish things could be more efficient with federal money, for sure.
So I just want to make the council aware that I've also been talking with Jenny in. The six street ball field, the building that, uh, the water club leases from us. Uh, meets a lot of criteria for a CBG grant, because of the ball fields and bathrooms and. The uh, extension of the building and the uh, serving the public in the way that it does currently serve the public. Uh, checks off a lot of, of marks on a CBD, C, CBD grant.
New development blocks. No, I, I, you've been talking about that project for years.
A lot of the criteria.
Uh, so the following slides are just about other project management support, and I would say the key word here is support. You know, this isn't just me working on these projects. These are, these are huge um, city projects, and so this is again a team effort. So the first one is the loan program. Um, we submitted a lot of documents to the state for review to finalize that contract. Um, there's a legal counsel letter, a disbursement schedule for the loan, and I've worked with Matt on that. Um, we did the URA IGA, so the intergovernmental agreement with the Urban Unit Agency. Just getting that contract in, in place has taken significant effort from, from me and John and Matt. Um, so that's moving forward. Hopefully the contract will be finalized very soon. Um, the Marine Board Technical Assistance Program, um, this is for the Great Cliffs in-water facility design. So I've been managing um, a series of meetings. We've had three of them. Uh, with the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, and a stakeholder meeting, and then we've got our public forum on May fourth at six thirty in this building. Um, I will be doing a presentation prepared for by the Marine Board on the facilities and the public will have the opportunity to comment. Excited about that project. Uh, it's been a long time coming. Uh, the last one, I've also been assisting uh, the engineering division, Sharon, specifically on the Campbell Park Sports Court project. Um, we're working on closing that out. Our contract goes till the thirtieth of this month. We've got all the financial stuff prepared. I've got all the financial stuff prepared. We're just waiting on a sunny day to get photos. So maybe, maybe today, maybe next week, we'll see. Yeah, it'd be great to get some photos of people playing out there, but it's just the, the season is extended with rain this, this. So next slide. This is a smaller project, the Watershed Enhancement Board. Assisted the Scapus Bay Watershed Council on the Fifth Street Trail Enhancement. So I've just been sort of involved in that project, making sure property lines are met and. Contributing some in-kind management. ODOT Saferards to School, this is again assistance to our Engineering Division. We extended, you'll see tonight's agenda has a, a grant extension from November twenty twenty-two to February twenty twenty-four. And we want to increase our timeline for that so that we can get competitive bids. If we tried to bid it now and get it in by November, I just don't think we would get competitive bids. It's just not a good time. People already have their summer schedules built. And then also part of the delay was the culvert repair with the county. Which wasn't in our original contract, and so we had to get that I G A in place. The Marshall Street closure, you may have seen the gate is installed. It's now just a fire access only. And that was, gosh, a year ago, a year and a half ago when the property owner came in and wanted Marshall Street closed from US thirty. ODOT completely paid for the project, so this was just funded by ODOT. They have an access management program and that project's done. Also thanks to Public Works for installing some candlesticks out there to make sure people aren't pulling in and then having to back out. So they helped to make that gate a little bit more visible. Other management support, so the Riverfront Redevelopment Request for Qualifications, that's taken a lot of my time just getting the RFQ drafted. And developing a solicitation process. We have our selection committee. We've all been invited and all said yes, so really excited about that. If anyone wants hard copies of the two proposals we have, I have extras. I'm hoping all of you have seen these digitally. Looking forward to that in May. Also, I worked with Crystal heavily to update our waterfront-related webpages. So if you sneak around on the website, it's. Much better, much improved. We've added a Streets and Utilities Project page, the Riverfront or Riverwalk Projects pages updated. And so our press release is going out this week and we're going to invite the public to attend the developer interviews that will all be sitting in during a special meeting. So I heard you, you wanted the public involved and so we're going to spread that wide. As many people that want to come are welcome to that meeting. We're not trying to hide anything. And so thanks to Crystal for working with me on those special meeting notices. So I decided from here on out, we're just going to have an Urban Renewal Agency Support Slide and our, our reports. Because it does take time to manage those meetings and this year in particular, we adopted a two-year budget. We had to do the I G A that I mentioned for the, the loan program. And then we also, in January, if you remember, we had a joint session with the Planning Commission and we did a giant urban renewal overview. And that, that took, that took my time and I'm, I think it was well worth it, but yeah, I'm just going to have an U R A slide, a time report all the time.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah. Next slide, I think that's it. That's me. Yeah, for sure. Anybody else? Want a hard copy? You've already got.
Approximately, I've got, approximately how much your time is ending up in paperwork that could be done by a secretary?
Well, I think since we've hired Christina, very little. Christina does all of the planning notifications now. She does all of the planning minutes.
And obviously you're doing telephony and stuff like that.
Yeah, but I would still say when I'm talking to the public, it's still something that someone who specialized in our code would need to know how to answer. Even like shed questions. You have, you kind of have to know the code pretty well.
Well then, how, how much time could you put on as a system rather than as a secretary? Because if we run you into depth because you're doing all this, we don't get much good to sort of the other half. And it sounds like your department zones needs a little bit of extra help.
Yeah, you could speak to that.
She is a representative employee and as a representative employee, she. Is not, is not abused.
And Jacob's not.
I mean, Jacob's is this hair. It, it's seeming like your time efficiency is getting awful.
I mean, I, I think there's kind of this plan for when urban renewal kicks, like we've, we've talked about it at budget committee meetings, I believe. It's ki- it's kind of part of the discussions in this like two-year, two to five-year. Timeline, there will probably be another planner.
Okay, that's, so it's in as compared to yours, the two of you are stuck here forever and that's it?
Jenny has also expressed community development as being what she really wants to move forward in. And so we know that. It's been announced to us before and. She's done a wonderful job, kind of doing both right now. And I think they do go hand in hand. So Jacob's been a great teacher for her. You know, because when she first came in, there was a lot that you had learned and Jacob was, he's done a wonderful job. You have done a wonderful job. Yeah.
And I think it is important for public to know too, in all this is that, you know, the Planning Commission did make its pitch for that and the city. And we do have, yeah, we do have a list, which it is something we are, we are actively looking at within the context of what we're, we can, can budget. So yeah, definitely is a need and we'll try to meet it when we can.
I'm glad that came up and you said that because it relates to the very last, last slide in this presentation. So let's talk about some other stuff that happened in the last six months. One theme that I just want to talk about briefly that Jenny, in Jenny's presentation was support to other departments. Now, we have a lot of customers, the public, the council, commissions, and our fellow departments in doing Public Works building, et cetera. And as a little department, you know, we, we do support other ones in, in various forms. The beekeeping amendments is an example of that. Matt Brown, Finance Director, it was first in his lap, but in, in a recent meeting, and I asked him if I could say this. You know, we're giving him a bad time about misspelling something and he said, you hired me as a numbers guy, not a, not a text guy. And this is more in the planning department's wheelhouse and so, so we took it over and concluded it. So that's something that happened earlier on in the year. By the way, that is just strategic plan item. We didn't focus on, we don't have strategic plan focused slides. Because we're kind of in the middle of strategic plans, but we're aware of a lot of the things on there, a lot of the stuff Jenny talked about are on there. So I'll just kind of refer to them here and there as appropriate. So the next slide. This Broadleaf Arbor event, this was actually about the same time as our last semi-annual report. And so it was just kind of interesting to look at that. Oh yeah, that was about the same time. And Fetsy Johnson spoke, of course, she's not even a senator anymore. And at the time, they did not have the St. Helens assault woes that they are well with now. So speaking to them, we were backed up about two months because of our old assault.
Well, I don't know why we went so deep.
Anyway, they, it's, it's that, it's just beware of our assault and please listen to us when you tell us that. So it was just interesting as a kind of a placeholder in time when the last time we were here, of course.
I was going to say that Jacob was very instrumental in that broadly helping out with the people that were involved. He helped tremendously. I forget exactly what you were really instrumental in even getting the funding.
Yeah, it was, it was the, there's a certain, because of the funding. They needed someone to act as the responsible entity. So it's just to help manage the bureaucracy essentially. But that goes into this whole, you know, teamwork and, you know, having these helping panels that kind of go in many directions. Another customer, the Planning Commission. Now the Planning Commission, we're seeing above average. Management stuff happening. One, for recruitment efforts. If you recall, we had one member that didn't work out, so we had to re-recruit them. We actually had someone resign recently, so we have another opening. And then the Planning Commission has also been looking at having a proactive initiative, which is great. I think a lot of good could come out of that. It'll just be a matter of respecting the time needed for strategic plan items and stuff and, and balancing all that. And so the proactive and planning commission management stuff, we'll certainly see in the next six months. We'll probably talk about it at the next semi-annual report. Next slide, this is a strategic plan item, our aerial photo. And G I S data efforts, they are on schedule. We were starting to really get nervous about the weather. As Jenny mentioned, you know, how's it running all that great as far as sunny days, but they were able to get a flight in on April seventh or so. We had a nice Thursday, not too long ago.
Three degrees that day.
Yeah, so that nice day, they were able to capture that. We, we do have some March photos. That has some shading and you can see some of those aerial photos there, but most of the city was visible. But those will give us some good leaf off photos that'll have more function and then we'll have the, the pretty ones too. Another place that we help support other departments with assistant development charges. Now, you know my personality, I put stuff on there, but the thing about the S D Cs, it's tough, right? We're all in this tough situation, inflation, things are going up. And we also have to deal with S D Cs. Not fun, not fun for the public, not fun for us, but we did provide that support. And so I want to at least talk about that with a little bit of comic relief because we can always use a little bit of that nowadays. Another thing that we've helped facilitate is the discussion of more parking related to the St. Helens Marina area. And essentially what this is going to be is a street project. So we, we have a conversation with Brad Henderson, the St. Helens Arena, and our Public Works Engineering Team to kind of get a game plan together. So we have, we have an idea. I think it's going to be, it's, it's another capital project to figure out where, where to put that on the list. Then get that conversation going though.
So that particular project, Brad has offered to do some of the finished work there, but there has to be some infrastructure stuff that the city needs to.
Yes, so the.
It's going to be a city street.
Yes, and, and facing that conversation, the pull will be on the city's dime as well. So.
Will that one connect to a different road or will you have to get, go through this RV area to get to it?
Yeah, I can talk about that a little bit, just so you're, so we, there's. What we, we're looking at is rounding right of way network, which includes some city-owned property. So this. RV part. This is actually public right of way right here. And, and we knew that when it, when it went in. And the reason I was helping, because I've been dealing with this for several years and have a lot of, have a lot of the stuff in my mind. So they actually built the public street up to serve these five units, six units. This right of way here connects with this. So if we look at the map. Potentially you can have the way going up here and then continue it on this property to Second. And then you also have this right of way for a street and on the street parking as well. Our initial thoughts were Phase One would be to get this second street connection. That way we do have another way out in the case things get dicey down there. It's, it's quite the basin just to have one way in and one way out. And so that would achieve parking and. Another means of egress when a, when a problem arose.
When you chatted with Brad, did he make any reference to the oral kind of. Not deal that we made, but the. Promise in a sense to, for the city and the, the, the property that we vacated for him. That could go facilitate parking. That strip on the left is what I'm alluding to. When the outline and the dotted line looks like the fifteen feet that was vacated. And when that happened at that time, in his presentation, he said that he would like to partner with the city. And I brought that up. I says, where are you interested in partnering with the city for utilizing that area as parking space? Yes, was the answer. So I just wondered if that came to, if, when you were talking with him, if that came up at all. It's on record, so if that makes any difference.
Yeah, we didn't dig into the details of that action. We talked about it a little bit because it's a street vacation I'll probably never forget.
As you know, that diagonal parking in there would facilitate many cars, actually on both sides. And so I think that that, I think in terms of planning and looking ahead, parking was a huge issue in that area. As well as ingress and egress. And I'm impressed with what you're doing with ingress and egress. The next portion of that is parking. So I hope that that conversation comes up with both property owners that we vacated that property. How we're going to do with it and how if we could partner with them for parking areas, if the city could partner with them. Even though the city had that right of way at one time and it was vacated so that he could, it would help him facilitate. The, the building that he has there. And because we did it on one side, the neighbors on the other side wanted it on theirs as well. So hopefully, hopefully you can initiate those conversations so that we will all have the benefit of parking down in that area.
Yeah, and, and my conversations with engineering, everybody, you know, that's, that's been the drive. And if there's a city street and it's not a parking lot, it just makes it easier from a bureaucratic standpoint.
My question was, would it be, if you are interested in utilizing that as a parking area, would it be a private parking? Or would it be public if we were in, if we were in partnership with developing a parking area there? I hope that it would remain public.
That's a good question because that's what I was going to ask now.
That's what it would be, would be public.
Yes.
He would help out.
We talked about that at that time.
Had in writing, and so I've done.
No, it isn't in writing, but it was in, it was in, it's on, it's a matter of record.
He's only, he's only followed through with six spots that we already vacated up by the other trailer park. You'll see that new addition of asphalt, that city-owned property that he took the whole bill for and made an asphalt parking there. And it's open for the public.
Well, he's a good team player. I know that.
And we have another lot right there. We have a lot and a half. The number of council lot asked us to sign off on that.
Yeah.
Is right there in there too.
Yeah, and that could be a modified street with an extra wide section for parking, yeah.
Thank you.
So that's why.
Believe me, I've been driving home to park.
Exactly.
And with Jenny also talking about the, the handicap, if you got foot launch or not, cat launch. O D F W we're working with, it's, we need parking down there.
It's going to be a more popular spot, just like this side will be more popular once we have more improvements there.
I definitely agree with that, just visually thinking about how to get to the parking, making sure that it makes sense for people to, you know, driving, you know, getting access to it.
Yeah, getting it to make sense because the visual cues are weird. So we may need to do some signage for that. So not everything we do is perfuming roses, including code enforcement. So there's some code enforcement stuff that we talked about that happened in the last reporting period. And one had to do with the real deal. Now, it wasn't them. But here's their business. They took this old building, set their vacant for years and years, put in the effort, put in a sewer system. The land improvements. So now instead of this derelict building, we have a beautiful business. So cool, great. And then we get some complaints about the, the next door neighbor. Not so cool, not so great. So they went through the process. And then someone moves in next door who didn't go through any process at all and you can understand they would be concerned. Now, I bring this up because we finally resolved. Now, I bring this up because we finally resolved everything in the last reporting period. Now, if you look at some of my photos there, two thousand nineteen, this has gone on for a while. Now, I did occasionally personally visit the, the real deal and just to let them know where the updates were at, and they were very appreciative of that. But we finally got resolved and so there was kind of a automotive repair type of business next door. And you can see, you know, they have their garden stuff out, having an R V right by it. You know, you could understand why they would be concerned, especially having gone through the entire process themselves. So there was a lot of getting a hold of the property owner who wasn't local, getting a hold of the tenant who wasn't local, having those conversations go on. And figuring out, okay, how, how do we, how do we do this? Now, the tenant still wanted to find a place to do business, you know, have a family, need to feed my kids, like, okay. Well, we, you know, we don't want to be mean, let's, how, how can we, how can we resolve this? Around the same time, and this is why I put this photo in the slide, a seventeen seventy-one Columbia Boulevard, the old P G E building. For a while, you may have noticed that it wasn't so attractive on the outside. And this photo is during that time period. There were some people in there that the owner did intend on having in there and using it as a residence. And, and they were interesting people, at least hearing the stories about them, and the one legit tenant, which was automotive repair, including R V repair, fled the building because now this is too much. And so, I don't know. So in talking to the folks next to the real deal, like, oh yeah, that would work there. It's already approved for it. They could just move in, so. Having talked with the property owner, we vacant a lot of time over the years, make those connections. So we're able to abate a code enforcement issue, get someone in another location that's legit. And after a lot of effort here and there, hopefully everybody lives happily ever after. So you don't hear a lot about this code enforcement stuff. I know in the past, sometimes the fact that you don't hear stuff is a positive. You don't hear complaints. Another one that occurred was just this, a shed complaint. And I didn't take any photos of it. But that one, we had to go back before the judge at least three times because there was a deadline, they didn't follow it. And so some of those efforts, that can be quite a bit. But did you get a complaint from the neighbor, hey, they're not doing anything? You probably never heard anything, and the neighbor was appreciative. So some of that behind the scenes code enforcement stuff, which there's no better glory in it, but it's stuff that we get to do sometimes. Jenny also helps on that.
Everybody wanted to let the council know that I actually met the gentleman that owned the business, they make food carts, is what they do. So, and if you see the garage open, stop in and talk to them. They're very nice people, yeah. Yeah, it's very interesting how they go about modifying trailer, anything, anything into a food cart.
Yeah.
Pretty well.
So I, I, I think a lot of that, having been in this community for a while and having rapport with certain people helps in trying to do these things, rather than just send a letter and crossing your fingers, just some of that proaction. So let's talk about current planning. And that's just the development that has occurred. Not as much this round, I think we'll see a lot more in October. But we do have some things, and one is the Kerbin Metal Works. Here is the before picture. If we go to the next slide. There's the after picture. This is on Old Portland Road across from McCormick Park. Interesting, and talking to these folks, they were in Portland and their phrase was Portland is untenable. So if they wanted to get out of Portland, the London Scappus found this, so we're glad to have them. Residential development is still going on and we can look at Elk Ridge, Elk Ridge, if you can go back, back to the previous slide. So Elk Ridge, this phase, this is part of phase one, was platted in the nineties. And no homes were built there until after the Great Recession. So here's back in two thousand fourteen when there was some movement starting in the subdivision and then more recently. They look at that, we have houses either under construction or fully occupied on that stretch. It's an interesting stretch. It relates us to some stuff that happened very recently, if we go to the next slide. So on this slide, those are lots one through seven towards the bottom. And if you look, you'll see this funky little notch that's taken out of those lots. And that's because this was an old landfill in the fifties through seventies, and there's a couple landfill spots. There's this large one here, D E Q actually made them shave those lots back. That happened several years ago. But then there's this, this one up here. And so more recently, they, the Elk Ridge folks applied to take this, there's this open space tract between lots seventy-four and eleven within a Bonneville Power Administration easement, so they want to increase the size of that, that tract to bring in this D E Q's solid waste cell. That way a future property owner is not burdened by that, which will hopefully help facilitate sale and future phases of the subdivision. Very similar to what we saw with Armstrong and that there was an environmental issue. They moved some property lines around, so a future owner would need to deal with it. Of course, now Armstrong has, I think, a Paul Vogel mentioned, we have a meeting tomorrow, so it looks like they have a buyer, someone, so move in. So hopefully, we'll be talking about future phases of Elk Ridge in the future, which this should be a catalyst for. Another development that you probably have seen happening on the north side of town, this is a four lot commercial subdivision. This is one we've talked about before. They're getting closer to complete the subdivision and since the last report, we have received our formal application from Burger King
Nice.
to go there, and so I won't be able to use this joke for a limited time. So now you and all the citizens of St. Helens have had it your way here in our city.
No Dairy Queen yet, though?
That's still, that's still at rumor phase, yeah. There's, there's commotion on a couple of the lots, but no, no movement yet, so.
Burger King knows, haven't it?
Burger King, we have the application. The application has been approved, so it is far beyond the rumor phase, yeah.
You sure it's not Winco?
I'm pretty sure it's a Burger King.
Concerned citizens, everything's a Winco.
Yes. Who needs polling when you have concerned citizens?
They can dream.
I'm just manifesting.
They want a Winco.
So we'll, we'll probably see applications for those other lots, at least some of them in the next six months. The Comstock property, this is one that should be very familiar to you. You saw an annexation recently. We talked about the access to Bar Avenue thing. By the way, tonight at the regular session, that dedication is on the agenda. So just a reminder, it was, it was this, so we finally got those little details worked out. Actually, they've actually submitted their subdivision, so it's, it's in my office now, and so we'll be processing that in the next six months. Another subdivision that I know you're familiar with is the North Eighth One. And we'll be seeing the subdivision development probably in the next six months and maybe building permits. We'll see how quick. This one's kind of complicated, so we'll see how quick it moves.
And development, year first.
Um, second. Yeah, Rich Bailey Force Trail was the first one since I've been here, fifteen years too, so that's a long time.
First reading on this tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's another thing that'll keep us busy. The high school will keep us busy for some time, so I just wanted to do a quick mention of that. And talking about civic projects, the Public Safety Facility. I've been a little bit more involved in the meetings because of the final planning of the site plan. And so that's moving, and I think we'll be seeing the land use permits in the next reporting period, so we'll be talking about that more as well. So what do we have happening in the next six months? All the projects Jenny has mentioned will continue, you know, those aren't just in six months, they're increments, those are long, longstanding projects. A lot of the stuff I had already mentioned, there's a couple more subdivisions that we could see. You know, they're in the commotion phase, still in the rumor phase, but you know, it could go to rumor to movement pretty quick. The G I stuff, G I S stuff will be a priority. That should be finished in a few months, so that will be a priority. And we definitely won't be bored. The final slide, so. Why, why, why is Yoda on here? So I have to explain this really quick. So I've been a few different places and you know, I've been in those circumstances where I'm the, the novice planner and dealing with some of the more experienced people. And in planning, especially with a small jurisdiction, you deal with a lot of different folks. And early on, we talked about having different customers, including other departments. Inherently, being in that kind of situation, you learn a lot of stuff, right? So when someone has a question, who are not living and breathing this stuff, you know, they look to you for questions. So when I got here, Skip Baker, my predecessor, he'd been here thirteen years and was one of those people that had a lot of knowledge, a lot of wisdom. And I remember thinking, oh yeah, he's like Yoda, because everybody goes to ask him for questions. And so, and I kind of forgot about thinking about, you know, those people being like Yoda, but in this reporting period, Jenny got a call from Public Works. And it was, it was about this no parking sign issue for an apartment complex on Columbia Boulevard. And I remember her getting that call and then thinking, you know, son of a gun, Jenny's Yoda now. She's part of the Yoda Club. And it's not, it's not a certification, but it is an honorary designation. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say Jenny is officially part of the Yoda Club.
She needs some air.
You guys are both Yoda. I didn't know why this slide was in there.
Looks a little bit more like Princess Leia to me.
Well, it's, now.
She can be baby Yoda.
Disclaimer, this is not an appearance, this is.
I'm gonna take that as a C O S for you.
Yes, that, that is, that is.
That's a really Jacob themed comment.
Yeah, yes.
I was looking through the slides earlier and seeing it. I was like, I wonder what he's gonna say about you.
You have to throw some mom cards in there.
It was great.
Well, thank you.
So question on our, are any movement still as far as working with the Moore Road property? Is there been any discussion? I mean, is that still moving forward?
I think it's more in John's realm right now. Yeah, he's had more recent conversations with.
I know you guys did a lot of work and effort behind that too.
Yes, and that's not for loss. I mean, I still think there's negotiations happening. Yeah.
Right now, it's, it's been beyond the planners.
Well, our.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to see if you guys have any that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, it's also kind of taking the back burner with the waterfront stuff. You can only, yeah, this is priority, right?
Pretty kind of copy of the waterfront stuff.
Yes, so I've got Berkeley, Chilton, Morton.
Well, give me one.
Yeah, okay. Well, just give us a friend, everybody, and Topaz, you have copies, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great, cool. And then do you guys want copies of the actual R Q as well?
Yes.
The dog, okay. Yeah, make copies of all.
Jacob, I've got a quandary about, it started off with the industrial property because of something I learned at the Port, Portland's restoration project. And it shows a number of pieces of property outlined for use in the industrial park. Where you want to put companies or buildings. When do we go through the partition business to designate that piece of ground? Because I know we didn't go through the partition process when we put the marijuana facility in. And that's one of the things that the judge said the sale of the marijuana place is null and void. The other part of that is, I learned again from the Portland thing that D E Q is going to, is working on with Boise capping the water inward waterfront of the mill. Okay. Now, which blocks off the whole mill, and which would change the value of the property, especially in the waterfront. Now, last council meeting, we had a presentation about the water pipes and sewer pipes. And they presented a few maps, and one of the maps was earthquakes. And there's another map was landslides. Landslides, which I've brought up a number of times, is right in the middle of part of the mill. But the other thing that came up and has affects the water is the whole front of the mill is a liberal vacation zone, well into the mill property itself when I've looked at it. Which would also affect the D E Q's business of this capping the business of contaminated water. Has any of this been taken into in the planning business? Because it could mean all this stuff means zero if they, you know.
I, I could, I'm gonna speak up now a little bit because I got this, probably, and you can correct me if you think I'm wrong. But the personalization, we've already went through, we did a personalization as a council.
We didn't have a public hearing.
Now, wait a minute, you've done that with our personalization. Let me answer without interrupting, you know, that you speak without.
Okay, keep going.
When I heard there was no truth to what you were saying. So we have done that. We went through the arduous process of actually how there were surveyors and moving and getting, going through with the O dot rail to put an easement for the rail to come through that property to, to do a personalization for A C S A P. So that's not true. The other part, the in-water part, it was true that office that started to work with the E Q to cap that, we stepped in and said, no way. We caught it right away, no way, absolutely no way. And now it's being revisited.
E Q was in, involved in as of last week.
You knew that, and you knew that. So because we know that we want to be able to pylon's in, and that does not allow us to pylon's in. The landslide is not done yet. Now, I can, he can look at all the geological maps and be his engineer, but he's not. And we actually are still in the funding process of looking at what that is down here. And that's why we have awarded a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Though it's more than that. We just got that grant, but we took further the explorer, exploration of the in-water piece of that. And so a lot of what you're saying is still yet to be determined, but you're making it out there as its truth. And the personalization though has happened, and it did happen. That's the one I could answer.
Was there a public meeting on that? I know we've done the, the layout, and I agree on that way.
Topaz, it was. Listen, listen, I'm not, I'm not trying to get vocal with you. It was called to urban renewal and we actually had a lawsuit over it. And, and our attorney of kind, his name was Ed, I forget his last name. But he was through, not Walt Foster, through, who's our attorney for? Jordan Rasmus. Said to Agnes, you got it right this time? And he said, yes, we do. And she backed off.
The judge's ruling is that.
The judge, the judge rules on whatever she wants to rule on. And I don't, it, it, it makes no rhyme to reason, the ruling, it's not in favor of anybody. So what you're, if you're concerning, you're talking about matters that you're not an attorney, and I'm not an attorney. And you're really not an engineer, and I'm not an engineer.
I love that one.
So you're not. You're not when it comes to. Run the slides.
The, the personalization plan, so that is a guide. And it's, you have kind of a mix. Some of the parcels in there are legal, what we call legal lots of record. They're already squared away parcels.
Correct.
Some are conceptual.
Correct.
And will have to be created by some type of land division process as part of that phase. Phase one has a lot of those lot of records. When you get to laser, later phases, they will have to be created.
That, that, yeah. There's some, absolutely, they've been in since time immemorial.
Yeah, and that's similar to some of the commercial subdivisions we've seen, similar process.
But as I said, some of those, if you look at them industrially and you have to look at the geology, whether you want to put that type of industrial stuff there.
I, I just wanted to say that, that, let me speak one more, one more thing, is that I, to make us up here look at, like, we are incompetent when we are working with city staff on these projects, and you are part of the process. You're really undermining yourself.
No, I'm trying to get to the, what kind of art.
The city of R A R. Because you always want to make a show out of that.
I'm not part. I'm not part of the city council, I'm part of the city.
Always want to make a show out of it.
Well, by the way, I am an engineer, by the way. And the state of Oregon had to admit that.
Oh, really?
Yes, it did.
So you, you have engineering background in uh landslides and all that?
Yes, I do.
Oh, really? It's not medical?
No, it's not. And I'm not a medical engineer, by the way.
Point of order, point of order, guys. Get back.
I only have that.
I know, but you're not doing it. I'm waiting for you.
The uh, well, because this is good conversation, it needs to have this. I'm glad Counselor Berkeley, I'm gonna give a point, you that.
So I just believe that and. And for citizens to know, we do have. Conceptual frameworks for parcelation and other things going, but we do have a process that we follow as a city. Follows state law, municipal code, so that when it comes time to actually, before we. Put the shovel in the ground. Process which developers, wherever, we as a city as developer. Would have to put plans together that would have to go before the planning commission. And be in conformance, so I believe Counselor Topaz, you are, uh, you, you. Right in that there are things that have not been finalized, but I, I did hear. Maybe perhaps the expression that we have made final decisions. And we have not made final decisions yet on specific. Properties or developments because we have not yet gone through the, the process. And we will not, I believe as a council, we will not make those steps until we make sure that we have. Uh, gone through the processes required by state law and by federal law and by our own, our own.
We obviously follow our own stuff. We always have. Always have. And the, the sale of the property is, is a sale of property. You can split off any property that's developable, will. That shows that it can be split off by our ORS's. And by state. And you can sell any chunk of property that you choose to. And there was a public process through that whole A C S A P. I don't know where you were, but I know you said on this council, and I know you attended the meetings prior to, that always keeps coming up too. Um. I think this was a great presentation. It really always gets muddied up. Because we have the drama theatrical part of I'm gonna show you how smart I am. Um, always end up with these projects. And uh, it's unfortunate. I, I don't know it all. I rely on staff to learn what, um, to know what I need to know and if I have questions, I ask them. And I believe them for what they actually tell me. I don't assume my own thoughts on things and continue to run out there and publicize it to the public. I'm not out there. Promoting assumptions on, on behalf of the citizens. I'm not, and you are.
Are you sure that I am or you, do you know that, or do you?
No, no, no.
Enough, enough.
You know, I, 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 I have asked Counselor Topaz plenty of times in this meeting. When he comes with these allegations to bring us actually written, written stuff that you've known that. I've asked him multiple times, has anybody proven presented with it? I haven't. It was just. A great presentation that just got muddied up. You guys are phenomenal rock stars. I know you've been working your butt off and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Okay. I'll talk to you later, let me get clear of.
Last day. Two thousand and thanks.
Okay, so in the future. We're bringing up our next item on the. It's gonna be the Public Works Department Semi Annual Report. Mohammed's here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Public Works Department, you wanna bring up your whole crew or?
Yeah, please step into the frontline. Don't be shy. We have an amazing crew coming in this afternoon. I'm super excited. You'll have a wonderful.
I'm not throwing any uh a chair yet this.
I'm ready. I throw Rangers, whatever the questions.
Not. No knuckle balls, no curve.
Thank you.
Okay. On courtesy for your staff here.
Thank you. Yeah, some of them a little nervous, so.
It's easy.
I just want to also thank you, uh, congratulate you on your certification.
Yes, thank you, thank you. It went for the whole city, that's why.
Yes, it doesn't mean if you get raised though.
Fine.
So it's uh.
It's, it's really.
Public Works Professional Management, right? That's what you.
Correct.
Yeah, it is only ninety in the.
In the United States.
Yeah, in the United States and you have acquired that, so.
Yeah, it's.
A great donation.
Good. Solidify, you know, uh. The leadership support and you know, what we do for the city, backing up with the citizens and best practices.
Absolutely.
Great, well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council President, City Council. We're very excited to, to present our Public Works Semi Annual Report today for you. I brought our great frontline supervisor here to also join this meeting to give you a really good. Content on what we do and have been doing in every division. So if you recall in September of last year, last semi annual, annual report, I promised you to focus my next one. Specifically on three divisions. They were the engineering, operations and the facilities. Next slide, please. And then uh, I went back when I was on vacation and I looked at the council uh regular session on the sixth. And I reviewed basically just from my own knowledge and there were good questions from Counsel Chilton. And I believe Counsel President and even Topaz uh about a couple areas. Uh, one of them was the memberance and the water filtration department. And there was a lot of questions about the water leakage in our city system. So what I ended up doing is adding those two categories to this particular presentation to give you some answers on your questions. And address some of those thoughts. With that said, so we're gonna work through the water quality division first. Talk about the water, uh, the memberance questions and we're gonna talk a little bit about the organizational structure and efficiencies, accomplishment. Current projects, future projects and so forth. The slide before this one talks about basically our mission in Public Works, which we continue to thrive. To provide our world-class service to our citizens through our frontline team here and. Provide an efficient uh and essential services on a level basis. Uh, moving to the water quality division, I'd like to invite Mr. Aaron Kunders. He's a familiar face, you've seen him in the past. He will talk a little bit about. The facility and you know, address some of the questions and we'll go from there.
So, good afternoon, um, I'm Aaron Kunders. I've been here before, so. Anyway, um, so we, uh, last time I was here, I was able to talk to you about the benefits of having two of the three uh departments. Uh, under one. The benefits luckily have already been taken off in the last six months since then. I don't know how familiar you get, familiar you were with the chlorine shortage that we had. But a week before the shortage was announced, we got a load of sodium hypochlorate down at the wastewater. And we never had to worry about it, but if needed, we can use that at water, same chemical. Um, so we were prepared and knew that the citizens were gonna have safe drinking water. Through the whole crisis. Uh, we kept tabs with manufacturer who supplies the wastewater plant. They made sure that. They were calling the water plant um supplier to make sure that we were getting deliveries. So.
To our supervisor credit, this is was proper planning in advance where we stayed ahead of the curve on these. We know there are shortages and we end up inventory. Our divisions and the combination of those facilities saved us through in this time because we had calls from other local municipalities asking us, can we buy something? And we basically were on the safe side.
The, yeah, there was a number of groups throughout the state that were asking if people would be willing to share and I selfishly said no. But knowing that I need to take care of our citizens and knowing that we had to take care of the water plant. Luckily, when they printed that, I think there was only two or three communities in the entire state that were willing to share, so. My uh selfishness was not alone. But um, you know, we had to take care of our citizens and we uh, we, when the crisis hit, we had over six thousand gallons, which would. Uh, hold the wastewater plant for during the summer, two and a half to three months. So I knew we'd be fine there. But the water plant was a concern because they have a much smaller. To much, they don't hold as much, but they don't use as much either, so. But we made it through and, but no issues. Besides the price hikes. Um, the other thing that uh. That we've done, and this is recent, and the picture up there is our new pump. When the water plant was built. They, I'm assuming they built it for full capacity. We use one million, or we make one million gallons a day during the winter and roughly two million gallons a day during the summer. And the plant was built for ten million gallons a day and the pumps that were installed are way oversized. They're starting to fail. They're turned down as far as they can go. It's just not good for the pumps. So what we've done is we've gone from the uh. The diaphragm pumps to a uh. Parastaltic. Uh, the diaphragm pump, it pumps, so you get one, you get a slug of chlorine. The parasolic goes nice and smooth, so you get a nice smooth flow going in. Since we've installed that, our. Levels, our chlorine levels have been very steady, very stable. It's been a huge benefit.
Some places call the roller pump.
Yeah, and there, there's a lot of little names for them, but. Um, I'm gonna stick with the parasaltic.
Okay.
For that part. Um, and the nice thing about that is pricing out the pumps that originally put in. These new pumps here are less than half of the price. So instead of buying these oversized monster pumps, we can get by with uh. These smaller ones.
So efficient approach at much less cost from what actually. Uh, next slide, please.
Um, this project I talked about last time, it's our SCADA, it was finished in late December. Um, I apologize for the pictures. The top one is the old one, the bottom is the new. I couldn't get a screenshot of the old SCADA system, so I thought, so having a really nice one, or just we'll go this way. It gives you an idea, it just cleans it up. Um, we have, there's a lot of benefits to this. One, we can check the water plant from the wastewater plant. So we don't need to have somebody on site all the time watching, maintaining. We can, we can see and if there's a problem, we can head up. Um, we can make adjustments from the wastewater plant. Um, and I think the biggest improvement is the. The old system was running off Windows seven. So. Little, little computer for such a critical piece of infrastructure. So now we're on the latest, the newest hardware, software, everything's up to date, it's current. Um, another big um benefit with, with the new one is the uh. Remote access. Before we were using TeamViewer. It's really handy, but it's not real secure. So now there's only certain computers that are allowed to access.
Perfect.
That site.
So Mister, Mister Mayor, go ahead.
So, so can you take? Can you take this program home?
We have a laptop.
On a laptop?
Yes. And we have a dedicated Wi-Fi hotspot for that.
That's impressive for emergencies.
Yes. If you ever heard, so where does the vulnerability come in the system, Council President, is if you've heard in the news. This is becoming an online security issue where the systems are very vulnerable. Windows seven? First order of business, we're giving, like, we cannot operate in this. It doesn't handle the security, the patching and all, and this is very vulnerable for. Access from the outside world and this is where they start tapping into the water systems. Cause a lot of damages. So we spend a lot of time and efforts into the systems and of course. The efficiencies that Aaron talked about from having two people. If you heard early uh, in last year in our, one of our uh meeting, we talked about the overtime reduction. It was not reduction based on. No need for work. In fact, we improved based on best practices of what, do I need two people? In the plan Saturday and Sunday to come for a couple minutes and check the system? How can we develop a much better approach? Operating the technology, investing into the infrastructure and having this Wi-Fi system where basically you're told. You only check it if we have an alarm and we can access it where you didn't have to drive, where we do. It's been working very well. City and budget wise, we were able to save tons of money. Next slide, please.
So this is our, these next couple of slides are gonna be our future projects. Um, this next one's gonna be a big one. Um, the, these are the membranes out of the water filtration facility and I actually brought a. Sample with me.
Not for human consumption.
Um, so that is a sample of the, what we actually discharge. So all of that is taken out of the water. Um, our water is very, very clean. Um, our turbidity coming into the plant is usually under point two. And leaving the plant is usually under point zero two. Um, our water coming in is cleaner than a lot of places going out, so uh, basically our filter, our membranes.
Wow, they really get it clean.
Yeah.
They're dealing out of all of this, right?
Yeah. Simply, yes. Um, they uh, cause have you had a tour after?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah. I went out with this.
All right. So um, that just shows you the fine particulate that comes out of it because you can see how, how murky it is. And those are all little, you know, pieces of whatever that have been filtered out, so.
If you have any of this junk analyzed.
So, I, I've got a question. Uh, do you use like, utilize all those racks continually? Or do you utilize one rack at a time for twelve hours and another rack? How, how do you manage those five racks or whatever you have there?
The plant, um, when, when the plant runs, we use all the racks that are available. If we have one rack off, the other three or the four will be able to handle it without a problem.
Yeah.
Um, typically that's only for maintenance, but you know, ninety-five percent of the time we have all four or all five racks running at a time. We have four racks, four large lac racks that have fifty-two modules in them. Those make all the drinking water and then when rack five, it actually takes all the waste from the other four racks and filters out again. And that's from rack five, so. We can, I think the number I read was that this plant can utilize and put out ninety-eight percent of the water that gets to the, the plant. A lot of these membrane plants don't have that final rack. They don't have the backwash recovery. So they're throwing away a number of gallons. Ours, we're using everything we can.
We have room for expansion on racks too, that's what I remember.
We have, we have expand, or room for two more racks. So right now are, we can do around a little over six million gallons a day.
Yeah.
With the two new racks, we could be closer to ten.
We're, our top is two million. That's why I've expressed shared water sewer with Capus. When it makes sense. They're trying to redo a sewer, we're looking at repurposing ours.
We got the, the resources and the power for expansion in future leads, absolutely. Definitely a conversation to continue. Now, on the memberance. Yeah, on the memberance uh question, I think there was a question last time and Counsel Chilton, correct me if I'm wrong. About either the cars and why we have not replaced or what do we do about replacing. Aaron can talk to you a little bit more about that, but the approach that I brought the city is not to wait until something fail and affair. We are in a proactive mood, going and doing what maintenance should be done on a scheduled basis, for example. These racks that you see, although our plant is brand new, they have a shelf life of ten to fifteen years, right? The fifteen years, we passed that, what are we at sixteen now, sixteen years, right? The racks, although they're in good shape. But do you wait until you have a catastrophe and you have to spend two hundred thousand to fix this? Or you have a maintenance schedule in place when the life cycle of the rack has ended? You start worrying about those. So you didn't have a catastrophic failure and you end up with not even having the resource. Because these are not only super expensive, hard to really install and project manage on time without proper planning.
Well, the other issue right now is supply and demand.
Supply and demand.
We have a rack completely fail where we need to replace it. Can we get that? So by planning for that, we can make a plan right now. We're, we've been talking to the manufacturer. If we start the paperwork in July, I want to wait till the fall to do it because we use, we're using all the racks during the winter, the summer. So wait till we start, the demand starts going down before, and that way it gives them months to be able to make sure they have what we need on hand.
So if the C R P U D power grid goes down. Uh, we, I would imagine that you have a, a generator of some sort to keep this. To use this going in case of emergency.
We have a generator on site. As long as Public Works can, the renewals can get us water, we can make water. So, perfect.
Redundant uh process for security.
So yeah, we've gone through most of this already. Um, so. Well, that's interesting.
Check, go through.
We don't have a Yoda, but we figured. Special effects, you know, that's.
So this is the next um project that we're talking about, the water plant. That pump I showed you earlier is going to replace these yellow pumps in the background here. Um, but right now we have, on the north side of the plant, we have our chemical. It pumps it up through the, up the wall, across the ceiling, down the wall, under a sidewalk, you have to the injection point. So there's a, over a hundred fifty feet of sodium hypochlorate, which is twelve and a half percent bleach overhead, it's a safety problem in my head and I don't like it. So we're in the process of moving this outside. We're gonna put it within fifteen feet of the injection point, there'll be a we'll be able to put it underground in a carrier pipe so we can replace that pipe as needed without digging everything up. It'll just be much safer. This is one that we're, actually we're pretty close on getting started, we have a lot of the equipment already, we just need to start the construction part of it. Um and then of course with the new SCADA, with these new pumps, everything's gonna be the chlorine residual will be much more predictable, much more stable and it's, it's gonna be a positive change.
The chlorine can burn your lungs and like.
No, we have, we have the liquid chlorine. So it could burn it if you're close up, but if the things that we have is about twice as strong as what's in the store. If you get in your eyes, you know, so you get, get on clothes, you've got those seconds before there's holes. So it's really dangerous stuff and just that fact that it's running so high through the plant, it's just.
That's a brand new plant, right, was, I wonder why that this wasn't addressed in building yet?
Probably the design, initial design is, when, when sixteen years ago, Castle Chilton is technology have evolved dramatically, probably today they have even a card, different cooling types that we have. They use the UV lights to treat a lot of the pathogens, which is the safest available. We didn't have that back at the time.
We can use a mixed oxygen, which would, you know, we would make our own bleach on site, much weaker. Uh we've looked into that, but this is easier, it's uh without it running through the whole plant, I think it's safer, you've got more. It takes much. This, we use twelve gallons to maybe twenty gallons during the summer. It's not a whole lot of usage, but you're still pumping it through pump it in a pump all day and not getting the injection point because it takes so long to go through the piping. So it's the, this process I think will, will make things much simpler, much easier, safer.
A quick thing, uh according to the DEQ, we were dumping uh our sewage into the river up until nineteen seventy and that's when, basically that time scale is when water plant, a whole lot of other things got changed around.
The wastewater plant, yes.
Yeah.
The water plant didn't get built into, until two thousand and six. At the time, prior to that, they were, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but they were pumping out the rain well and adding chlorine right there.
Yeah. But I mean, it, it's been for a long time, we've been way back as far as design time.
Yeah, well, in this plant, you know, I have to give the city credit at the time because they built it right. They built it for expansion, they've got the property, they have the space, they don't have to go add oh, we're gonna add another room that looks weird.
Yeah.
They've got room, we're gonna have, we're gonna be set up for a long time as long as it's maintained. So this is the last project I'm gonna talk about today, this is at the wastewater treatment plant. These are the screens that screen out everything that people flush.
It does screen that my comment, I got, I got in trouble for my, my comment, anyway, so. What's one of my favorite parts though of that?
It, it, a lot of people like it because they're absolutely amazed what people flush. And uh I can tell you stories, I'm going to refrain from that, but.
You have others, you flush some crazy things.
They play a bunch of crazy things. So these screens are roughly twelve years old. Um we installed them and that's, this is where we first see this sewer come in. They uh screen wash and compact between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and ten garbage each a year. So it absolutely blows my mind how much stuff is in the sewer that should be there. So last summer, we, uh the manufacturer sent out a technician, he went through both screens, looked it over, came up with a price of what it would take to refurbish them, came back much lower than we anticipated. And uh so what we're looking at this summer is he'll come back and do one of them and replace all the plastic parts, any stainless steel parts, so you know. Odors, brushes, everything and bring it pretty close to back to and or a fraction of the price and then following summer, we'll look at doing that, the other one. Once those are both done, we have two years of our new screens, lasts an hour for eight to ten years and uh those are expensive pieces of equipment, so. Without them, it, all the solids will end up in the lagoon and the treatment process, it causes odors, treatment issues, it just makes a mess, so. These are, I don't know why they didn't put them in when the plant was built, but this was done well over ten years ago and the amount of scooping that we have to do around the primary lagoon has almost vanished, so. I'll be available for more questions, I, if you have anymore right now, I can, but.
We, uh, thank you very much, Aaron, appreciate your time, yeah, we are, uh, you know, just to build up a little bit on this, bringing our Public Works National Week coming up in May and we're gonna do a very nice old city and community with videos about every single department, so stay tuned for that, it's gonna be really exciting. Thank you again, Aaron, okay. I'd like to talk to you here and invite Mister Buck Taber. Our facilities and joint maintenance supervisor responsible for all the city facilities and our fleet and equipment. Uh Buck, uh with that saying, I'll let you run and you know, I'll be able to support you.
See, I'm nervous, I am. Okay, so if you go back to the first slide for a second.
Yes.
Um for those of you that don't know, this used to be the Simpson Building and it is now the home of, of facilities and joint maintenance. Um we've done a bunch of remodeling in there, moving of storage that didn't need to be there, most of it was just junk. Uh people were hiding. So we now have an office in there, we have a lunchroom in there, a meeting room, we meet there every morning uh to discuss what's gonna happen during the day and we also have in rear of the, the building, a nice wood shop for Roger workout of. So that whole property's been kinda repurposed and it's working out really well for us.
And I just wanted to speak that that was very fiscally responsibly done too and it is a dramatic change. From the amount of money, from the amount of money that was spent.
I'd like to make a comment over here, Mister Mayor. Last time we talked a little bit about, you know, we introduced potential future plan on, you know, facilities maintenance and, you know, I know Councilor as you asked, well, which you can just contract this up, let me tell you, contracting someone up for all this work, you're looking at what, more than two hundred thousand dollars?
Just in the upstairs remodel, well.
Just in the upstairs and good luck even finding someone to do that. We've done all this in-house at zero cost, basically our team members, our equipment, which we are super proud to, excited and show you more of what we have and our capabilities here at the.
Well, I'd like to come see it, so if I stop by or email you, you'll be here.
Anytime we're there, yeah.
Would love to show.
Yeah, I'll just pop in, if you see his truck out front, just pop in.
We kind of sat down there, you know, like, alright.
I remember waiting, not longer than you might stop by.
Alright, yeah, this whole project.
Years ago, yeah.
Kind of recycling everything we have, I mean, our wall is painted with four different cans of paint we mixed together to cut, whatever color we came up with, that's what we got. It worked though, it worked, worked out nice. Um as far as responsibility for our team, um basically our job is to maintain safe operating conditions of all of our facilities and all of our equipment and as this as the slides go on, you'll see just how much equipment and facilities we really have it. Doing this kind of amazed me, I was like, wow, we have a lot and we deal with minimal people.
Can I, can we go back to the last slide please, Kathy, thank you. I wanna just touch base on, every picture has a story here, just so you know, if you haven't seen this room before, what our team in maintenance has done, you will be probably shocked, the mistake we've done is we didn't take a lot of pictures before and after. This was an office, in fact, I think uh the finance office was here in the past and we are growing and we are having a lot of needs for professional meetings with city officials, with DEQ, with other entry, and we didn't have much of a room or organized place and Roger, facilities, maintenance, public works have revamped this room to make it one of the best, most professional conference rooms that we have been using on a regular basis by the entire city.
Yeah, it's, it's nice. I was interviewed by Matt and uh
Where?
No, actually, no, we did need, we did need to talk about, you know, budget issues and all, yeah, it was a nice place to meet, so.
And to Matt's credit, he was part of, when I came here, he had a lot to do with the reorganization. We worked together actually on the plan, how can we expand the space we have and, and to come up with these rooms and make them more efficient for the city.
So like I said, uh I was kinda blown away by the amount of stuff that we have. Um facilities maintenance alone, we have three hundred plus completed work requests since we started an email system. So if you would need us for any facilities or equipment, you go to PW Maintenance, send a request. I can go through, plan it, I can go through and prioritize it and schedule it so for the work to be done, which is really made our customer service a lot better. And that's through thirty facilities with one full-time employee. And we utilize the heck out of Dave's crew at Public Works Ops, I mean, we use them all the time and we couldn't do it with just our one man, even though he's really good. Um and the, and the biggest thing about all this is, yeah, is we've done all of this work uh no injuries or accidents and that's something that we take a lot of pride in.
Yes, safety, zero incidents, the entire year at least, I've been around and probably prior to that, this is one of the biggest thing you hear in construction or in any field that could do with facilities and heavy equipment is injuries, right, there's always constantly issues. Our team again, we take tons of pride because we have the best of the best to watch over the safety, the handling of the equipment, best practices in the field and everything that they do. And having zero injury, I can tell you, uh council members and Mister Mayor, it's, it's a big deal.
How many people you have?
Total?
Uh yeah, with no injuries.
Well, with, with, with no injuries, three.
Three years of no injuries.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we haven't had an injury in the uh, in the joint maintenance department in over two years and it's been over a year for facilities. And we haven't had any major injuries, thank God.
Uh I do have one request for the, that maybe you could remember is the, the uh train that the city purchased, because we did purchase it through our tourism, but it is a city-owned, that, that needs to be overlooked by our mechanics here shortly. Yeah, so I just wanna make sure it gets on the list, cause that was brought up tonight or earlier.
It's a long ticket though.
Yes.
There you go. I'm familiar with that system, so this system was created.
My work, so it's important and it's a priority, so I like it.
To touch base, that system was created in September.
I know sometimes it happens last minute, so I just wanna make you aware of it now. Cause you know where it's at, it's a moment where.
If you put H as priority high.
Yeah. Yeah, and another thing about the picture with the library there, another cost savings thing was removing the chairs and auditorium of that so they could do the carpet. You wouldn't believe the process in that, that's teared up. We had men climbing underneath it there, cause they were through bolted, so you have to hold each nut on each chair and pull all those out, that flooring company would have it would have been very expensive to pay somebody to remove those, store them and reinstall them, so that was, that was a huge cost savings there also.
Wow. You, you also kinda redid the design of it, which came out a lot neater than it used to be.
Yeah, it looks a lot cleaner, does it? Uh these are just a few of our smaller projects that we've done and they're constantly coming up uh with the new rec centers, the new community centers, uh Dalton Lake. Everything from police departments calling us for speed signs to installing a bench, I mean, it, it takes all of us and that's kinda what we do, uh from putting ropes on things to it's just, there's, there's lots and lots of stuff and it never seemed to slow down. Here's the example of the upstairs uh remodel, which I believe that project took a little over a year and I don't have the exact man-hours into it, but it is a lot. Um and really without, without the skill sets, talents of our team, that's all of Dave's team and, and Roger, uh none of this would have been able to be done, I mean, it's a drastic change. I really wish we had before pictures because it was just clutter and like I said, it, it's drastic.
I can, I can tell you counselors, uh when I came in here, I walked into this office, John didn't tell me what is the shape of it, right? And I immediately turned and said, I'm, I'm, I can't work in this environment. This is when we got together, as I said, with the entire team, the place, we took pictures before and after, you will be really amazingly, positively surprised with the progress of this entire space upstairs.
It's a very. The way the counters were set up were right along and then knocking a few walls out and redoing them, it made a big difference.
Again and again, we go back, you know, public works, the, the amount of service and, and the level of service that they provide to the city is immense and I felt today that I wanted to bring the team to really expose that level of service and professionalism and the amount of work to do on top of that, how our team and public force continuously looking at cost saving for the city, the budgets and everything that we do from our end to save on adding and or contracted.
Like that, and I think um it's important that we expose that to the citizens too, so that they know what happens behind the scenes. They know who put, who put the speed, you know, sign up in their neighborhood, you know.
We get a lot of thank you from the citizens for these lot of things, the speed signs, uh whether it's a, you know.
Or benches.
Or benches, it has been paying off, again, all this work is for the community and citizens and that world-class service and the customer service is our number one.
And there it is, now you don't have to go to the Simpson Building. So this is the Simpson Building after we've done our little remodel, that's my little office on the right up there and that's the lunch room and meeting room, which is pretty much the way it was back in the day with all the hardwood and stuff, but with our budget, we're getting there and it's, it's functional for us and uh it's nice having our own building, there's no other offices in the city to really take over, so it worked out well.
Strategically also is really close to our public works operations on that side, so these team work really closely to each other and the shared resources are important with Buck needing some support, Dave steps in and always have that collaboration, which is really important.
In this example, this is a upstairs at Public Works Ops. This is another one, it was just a storage unit where it was kinda nobody threw anything away or it was just hide it, not store it and so it just turned into a mess, I mean, it was to the ceiling in some spots and we decided we'd like to have a spot to use and that GIS mapping room on the right is very handy for us. If you're looking at any of our infrastructure, we have a big screen up there now, which is pretty fancy for us. Um we've got the sink area there where we test backflow devices and practice testing. It's just useful now in the storage, we're much more organized and it, it turned out nice and it was, it was another low budget item that we put our money in the right spots and made it very functional.
That, that screen, you guys are so worth it, just so you know. It was something we wanted to give you guys to have that technology availability, so you don't have to zoom in into a piece of paper.
Yeah.
And it's been, again, very well worth the two hundred dollars investment for you.
And it's nice enough up there now, you can take someone from the public up there and let them look at it on a bigger screen and not be embarrassed of your mess. I mean, it's, it's a lot more professional for sure. Um yeah.
This is an important.
But we have two full-time mechanics, we maintain, it says a hundred and fifty-three pieces, pieces of equipment. I guarantee it's higher than that by the time you start adding in pumps, anything you pour fuel in, anything mechanical, I mean from dump trucks to chainsaws, we got it all and you're gonna see slides of that, we have a lot of equipment. Um again, we're using the public work maintenance uh email system so we can keep track of things and we also have a service request forms and I have all of those so we can know what our guys are doing, when they're doing decent equipment maybe is aging enough to where the price of parts in it are not worth the price of the vehicle or um we have a lot of nice equipment, but there is aging. Um and yeah, it's, like I said, the mechanics have gone two years without an injury or an accident and uh it's, it's a lot of stuff and you're gonna, you're gonna be kinda surprised, I think, when you see how many pieces of equipment you'll see in these.
Yeah, this is what I hope, why Joey can we just go to the next one. This is a glimpse of what we actually own in the city and don't be fooled by how clean and shiny these trucks they've been aging, but the team have done an excellent job keeping them in good shape, maintaining them, cleaning them on a regular basis. And as you can see from this picture, this is just the functional vehicles that are specific uh for a lot of the work that happens on the infrastructure that people don't see on a record, this is right. It requires a lot of skills, a lot of training, a lot of uh safety requirements before we can do this kind of work and uh we go to the.
And those are not including parks vehicles.
Yes. This is a short little video of even the happy equipment that requires, again, very highly skilled individuals. You cannot grab someone from the street, hire him and have him run one of these machines. It takes a lot of continuous education, CDL certification from various backgrounds to be able to run these equipment, because as you know, they are very dangerous. And again, to maintain that safety and zero injuries, it's a big thing we celebrate every single day.
Blessing to have them all, I mean, it makes. Blessing to have them all, I mean, it makes the jobs that we do possible.
And, and that's one other one that shows you basically our capabilities, uh, Mr. Mayor and Castle. Members, we are very proud here to be the best of the best in the entire Columbia County when it comes to our team. Workforce and the equipment that we do a lot and we stand out and we've even been asking a lot for advice with. Other entities ask us to, you know, how you do this, I do, they see the value and they see how great the team is and. Wanna learn from us and, you know, we take pride to be a role model and better than everybody in the town.
And we also have the equipment to where if the county doesn't have it, we can work with them and, and help them out, they'll help us out. And we've done it with scappos. We, I'm almost positive, we have the best equipment in Columbia County and that's, that's great for us. There's two more examples, these big excavators on the right, you know, St. Helens Rock, well, that's what they do most of the time, they beat rocks. One of those, you're paying somebody to do that and it's a lot of money for rock decks, you guys know that. Those are very useful pieces of equipment around here. And the smaller mini, that's, that's kinda new for us and is very versatile, very nice for getting it smaller spots. Where you can't get the big equipment in there. It's all just tools so we can, so we can do our job and if we weren't able to have this equipment and operate it. Our cost would be crazy with us, from attracting all this out, uh. We love it when we're, when our, we're used like this and that's, that's where our guys are there to be, if they wanna do these projects, they're like kids playing in talking toys.
That's funny, that's what I think every time I'm on a truck, you know, like my little dog.
Mister Mayor, if I put you in one of these, I bet you, you will have one in the middle of the news.
This slide here, the truck on the left is a jet truck, that cleans sewers, that'll hydroexcavate, which is huge for safety for our crews to pothole gas lines. Things like that, so you don't use the big yellow.
That thing is utilized so much around our city.
Use it a lot and, and it, it's a time saver, it's a, it's a, a man saver, you're not breaking your back. Um, and the safety thing's huge around, around other lines, but clean sewers, uh, preventive maintenance in those. It does all that cleaning before we C C T V, which we also have that, so we can record and know what our. Underground infrastructure looks like, cause you can't see it, so we go inside of it, see what it looks like and keep all that on record for repairs. And the one on the right, of course, is the sweeper. It kinda gets overlooked, but that piece of equipment is extremely handy, whether you have a car accident, you have a parade, maybe they didn't clean up very well. We use sanding rock in the winter, well, we like to pick it up, get it off the roads before windshields are chipped, things like that, uh. And I know for a fact the, the town of Sandy contacted me the other day and they pay, uh, what is it? They pay a quarter million dollars a year for a sweeper to go through their little town twice a month, sometimes once a month.
Think about that number for a second.
So your price to your machine compared to that, uh, I mean, it's a very valuable.
You can use it even, uh, with a little maintenance, obviously the, the teeth or the brush of these trucks. This is where we step in, this is our team to keep all these machineries in check and maintain to give the equipment more. Uh, with that said, I think that's shine, shine a little light on the facilities and Joe maintenance, thank you very much, Buck. Thank you. Uh, to further kinda enhance and connect these two departments together, I'd like to invite our public work supervisor, Mr. Elder. Who has been in the city here for a couple of years at least, I think I know for. One of our most senior public works and one of my top, uh. Management team here that I rely heavily on for the entire city operation and infrastructure. Without further introduction, Dave, uh, I'll let you run with your, uh, department.
Okay, thank you, Mohammed. Um, thanks Buck. If it wasn't for these guys doing the maintenance on these rigs that are up here. The guys that I have on my crew wouldn't be able to do their job, so they, they keep us going. And, uh. So the team that I have and I work with, which are some of the best people, I've been with the city for twenty-eight years. Been public work supervisor for two, okay? And this is the best outstanding crew I've ever worked with in my time being here, I have to say that. I'm proud of every guy on my crew. Um, they take pride in their workmanship and come to work and. Their customer service is outstanding. It's a small crew when you look at the numbers. Um, but they're a talented crew, there's a cross-trained to be able to run different pieces of equipment. I can have water guys work with sewer guys, they know what's going on, they're, they're a great bunch of guys. Um, we've always got somebody on standby twenty-four seven, day or night, these guys go out. Um, no matter what the weather conditions. Like I said, they're trained in multiple aspects, um, and some of these are very dangerous. And the safety aspect, we haven't had, uh, lost time injury in, in years. You know, just like Buck's crew. Uh, some of these, like the confined space, uh, going down, you got hazardous. Uh, atmospheres, the guys know how to test for it, know how to get in, get out, keep an eye on each other. Traffic control and flagging, you guys know what it's like being out on these roads. Well, being on the side of the road or Highway thirty, trying to keep from getting run over, these guys are great at it. This is just a few of the things that they're trained on, um, and certifications and watering collections, so. A few of the things that they see and a lot of these are behind the scenes that people don't realize. Um, we're the, we're the boots on the ground, these guys I work with. The street sidewalk gutters, storm drainage during flooding, these guys routing in the, in the night with it raining. Sewer collection, making sure things are flowing the way they should. This is, um, a small piece of the larger things that, um, these guys do, along with a lot of others.
And to add to Dave's point, I mean, I cannot stress enough on this, the pride our team takes to keep the city operational. This is, this is the crew, this is the team under Dave's and Buck's and, and this team you see everywhere, who runs the city operation while. Everybody's sleeping at night at three in the morning, when we have that breakage and also the team who responds on a twenty-four seven basis. When you see that snow and those extreme weather conditions, this is the team that actually answers the call. And who, in my opinion, don't get enough credits, at least from the outside, because people are not familiar with what public works do. But that operations on a twenty-four seven, it has everything to do with safety, with the city well-being, the level of service. Everybody in their comfort home, right? Wash shower in the morning, that water that you get, if the team is not doing their job, you won't have that water. To drink water, without this team, you cannot engineer it, that's what you have, all the streets and the traffic lights and the safety and so forth. I really wanted to bring this team specifically to really shed some light on the fact of what they do and the credit they truly deserve. That I felt like it just wasn't out there, this is what we really wanted to do.
We're constantly putting out little fires. And again, you know, they just do it and it's not like you're in that big shiny spotlight on a big huge project. There's a ton of little projects that they do that, no clue. That public works was involved in.
And, and my crew, being with them for so long, they liked low-key. They don't want the bells and whistles and.
They're very shy.
So for me to be here. This isn't us.
Well, we're impressed with you two coming, so thank you. I'm here for Mohammed all the time, I love you Mohammed, but it's nice to hear you guys.
And that's the point, and not to give, there, there is one more person who's very special in that department, Sheri Ingram. Who literally, I tell her, she's, she's the boss there. I call Sheri, like, what can we do? I need her opinion and advice and she's at the shop and she's a very. She is, yeah, I call her for advice, I don't call Dave, I call Sheri, so this is just technology as well, Sheri was not here today, but she's a very.
Yeah, Sheri logged, everything has a knowledge of everything over there, just for an example, I had two different keys, uh, uh. Park one and a, uh, master. Go here, maybe those, you don't even supposed to have this one.
Say she won't like that master.
So when we go back, we'll tell her, she's gonna be in the next presentation. No, she is a huge part of our team. Yeah. Another aspect of our team is, like Buck said, we work with multi-agencies. Throughout Columbia County, throughout the state, um, this project here. The city combined with the P U D wanted to put in, uh, electric vehicle power station.
The very first in the city of St. Helens.
Yes, and so it went from design to concept to reality. With our crews coming in, hammering out the basalt, of course. So P U D could get their transformers and everything in and then, yeah, we have a great project. When it was all set and done, and I actually seen a car parked in front of it the other day, actually handling it.
It's right behind the Twilight building, they call it.
Yeah, the city parking lot across from, uh.
Yes, yes, in that big space, yes, and.
I mean, there was a Twilight scene there, so.
Uh, that's what. And I can tell you, uh, council members, this was, uh, uh, one of these projects that we partnered with the P U D, as Dave mentioned. And they asked us for support and in-kind contribution, again, there was no cost to the city, but we collaborated and built this partnership with them. As they are a great partner here at the city and we got a very special thank you from their top management team, thanking us and the crew for the good job. The love of service, the equipment, I mean, we've done it in a record and again, it's a very proud moment of a small project that you didn't hear about. The very first in St. Helens for electrical vehicles.
Well, with the fossil fuel crisis, this is a very visionary kind of concept that is, uh, probably going to, uh. Escalate in the next twenty years, it's, uh, it's gonna be a difference in our, in our city.
We'll see a lot more coming down the pipe. So, as I said, our crew takes pride in everything they do. There was a city lot over off of, uh, South Third, behind John Gum, um, in between. South Third and where actually the electrical charging station is. Our crew came in, cleaned it up, uh, made it actually sellable, I believe. I heard rumors that that sold, but I don't know if that's true or not. But the biggest one was, if you've been around here any time, you remember what Highway thirty used to look like. And our crews came in, cleaned up everything and made it look, um. You know, made it, yes, to where our citizens, people traveling through our town. Made it look like we had pride as they went down the highway to come into town.
I have to comment on that because when I first came to the city, they, that's all they got was complaints, complaints, complaints. Why isn't, uh, why isn't it mowed out there? Why is it look like it does and whatever? And, uh, what it is now, that's, that's like night and day, beautiful, beautiful transition.
Yeah, and that was, uh.
Just out of pride.
Yep, and that was from, from my crew, that was.
This is the crew who's done it all.
Yep.
What's the ongoing maintenance plan for that?
Um, the way we've got it set up right now is the only thing we have to do is mow it. Before you had plants and weeds and you couldn't, you couldn't take care of it, it was just, um. It was put in back when they put the new highway in, you know, and they put, it looks, anytime you plant something new, it looks so pretty. Well, you give it another five, ten, fifteen years and it looks like a jungle, yeah. And if you happen to go onto Google Earth and you like drive down Highway thirty, you know. Um, it still had what it looked like before. And then if you look at it from an aerial view, it looked, it had it what it looks like now. And it's ama, we were amazed when we look back on it going, we have a lot of stuff off of there.
Used to be a garbage catcher.
Exactly, exactly. So. Um, with solutions, obviously, you know, that is something that. We try to do is make solutions because it makes our guys' life easier and helps the citizens of St. Helens. One of the biggest ones, as you know, we're built on solid rock, when it rains, the water doesn't go anywhere and people get flooded. You know, and so we try to find solutions to get rid of those problems. This one is at Ashwood and that is at the intersection of Sykes Road and Columbia Boulevard. There's a little cul-de-sac right there. That storm line, there's an open ditch and it ran back behind these houses and it swept over near. This one guy's house, he'd have it sandbagged three high, you know? And I looked at it one day and went, you know, if we, and got my guys over there and said, if we cut that ditch straight through and took that bend out. I said, I think that would alleviate that, talked to the homeowners, uh, they loved our idea, we went in. Made it look like that, the guys, on the bottom right-hand, uh, picture, he said, this is great. He said, now, I've always been wanting to build a deck next to my house and now he's got property to do it. Um, and it's worked out fabulous and the neighbors love it. So we're always looking to try to see how we can help out, uh.
This is, this is a great example of what a typical call that comes in through our department, right? When you get a citizen concern, citizen complaint, citizen need, right? This is the type of project that comes in on a regular basis all over town. You know, and that's what the kind of work the team does on a regular basis on operations. Uh, this is a great, great photos that they've provided that gives me, again, a lot of that pride and joy, but also shows you what kind of work that is being done. It's highly technical, highly skilled, uh, trait that you need in order to run a city in operations. You, this work, you cannot bring someone today and just teach them that, it takes a lot of efforts, training, learning, and you can show them that's a work. Dave, you can add if you have anything.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect, Mohammed. Um, these pictures here, as Buck mentioned, the flusher truck. On the left-hand side, that is a time and lifesaver. We use that a lot for excavating down to water leaks, like you see on the right-hand picture, um. And we use special equipment, you know, my guys can tell and they know what to do once we get it exposed, they're great. You know, put a repair band on, uh, you've heard enough about probably the North Eleventh. Uh, valve deal, that's the picture in the middle. Now, if you take these pictures and you take them at night and you add rain or snow, these guys do the same thing. Just to kinda throw that out there. These are perfect day pictures. So.
Which is not the case, unfortunately. You have, uh, illumination equipment, we can bring a heavy.
Yes, yep, we do have light towers and we have other portable lighting.
So you can see where you're getting rained on in the mud.
Yes, and we have done that. Um, so, some of our projects, um, our water system. And this goes from the water plant with Aaron to our rannie wells in Columbia City. To our reservoirs, to the last free-flowing tap at a household. The state of Oregon does what they call a sanitary survey every five years. And they come in and they basically look at every single aspect of your system. Also, your standard operating procedures, what have you got? I mean, they run you through the calls and. We ended up being one of the ones in the state of Oregon, uh, getting the outstanding performers. It was a huge honor for our crew to get that. And the funny thing is, um, we just got that award in the mail, uh, yesterday.
So Mister Mayor, this is a huge, again, accomplishment for the entire team under Dave's, Buck's and the supervisor's leadership. To get to this point, I can tell you, this is unique, this is not given, it's earned. Nobody can achieve this honor just like that, it's all the best practices, the safety, everything we just explained. On top of what they do to earn, and again, great leadership, we cannot get through that. And this is again, one of these things that doesn't get enough credit for the crew and the team members of the public.
Sure, yeah, so. Uh, just real quick on the other ones, uh, Yumetilla Water Line, we had contractors come in. Uh, just real quick on the other ones, uh, Yumatilla water line, we had contractors come in, um, to put a water line in between Plymouth and Yumatilla. And once they got that done, um, we deciding to save the city money, took a six-inch line, went from Eleventh Street to Tenth Street along Yumatilla, hammered rock three-quarters of the way across, as deep as this table, to get the six-inch line in. Um, and we just actually finished that today. Uh, putting, connecting up the last water service to help for fire flow and, um, water for the citizens over there, coming off the new six-inch line. Elk Ridge, that was the one that Jacob brought up about the building out there and all that. Um, there's a pump station that boosts pump, uh, the water pressure to the houses because of the elevation. We've got that up and running and then the North Eleven valve repair that we've already beat to death.
We, we have over a million plus cost saving just in the last eight months of that. Just for your record, that this money we could have used from whether it's a maintenance budget, we chose not to do that while working internally with our talented team. And also give tons of credit to our partners and our other team support from the planning, Jenny and Jacob. We work together on tons of projects, right? These projects require a lot of good project management, good zoning, good planning. And the team across the city, uh, from top to bottom is involved and they do tons of amazing work, so. It, it's a group effort, we like to use the "we", it's not the "I", and this is how we get to this successful.
So, you know, it's been years since our sewer master plan, water master plan, storm master plan have been updated. We found out there are some issues there, especially with our sewer and our storm. You know Storm, Dave, Dave knows everything Storm, he does, cuz his whole position, he knows the storm water. Don't want to tell you otherwise. But we're gonna need help because our predecessors, not nothing to do with any one of us, any one of us. But we're gonna have to come together as a team to be able to address some issues. Nineteen eighty-nine, there was a first sewer issue in that master plan.
Mm-hmm.
Our predecessors failed to do anything or budget anything for that. And now it's coming to a point where it's crucial for development. And, um, anything that we can do in-house is gonna save us money. And, uh, but I just need everybody to gather as a team to be thinking of ideas and, and ways of how to maybe do something, just sometimes you just have the aha moment.
Mm-hmm.
And even if you take stupid ideas, sometimes it's just like, no, that's brilliant, that's actually brilliant.
Yeah. I totally agree with everything you're saying. And that's one thing about me and my guys, you know, I'm a long shot from knowing everything, you know, even Storm. I know when it's raining, it's backing up, we got a problem. But that's what I, when I tell my guys, I'm like, okay, this is, this is my idea, but I want your input. You know, just like engineering or planning, you know, we got smart people throughout this city. And, you know, everybody's got a different outlook on, on things. And that's, like you said, it triggers somebody to think a different direction and, and figure out a solution. Yeah, that's kind of what happened on the Ashwood thing. And are some of the things I'm looking at on the next slide will maybe give you an idea. Um, you know, excellence, that's what the guys strive for. Um, the Highway thirty strip, we talked about that. McCormick pound, McCormick Park Playground, we're a huge piece, huge piece of that.
This is all Public Works who's really made that project come true. They deserve it, gave all their credit because that project was not going in a good direction until we stepped in and really.
It's a sidebar.
That playground is filled from sunup to sundown.
Oh, it is, it's amazing, it's amazing.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
It's conventions, though, there's nowhere for the parents to sit.
I think that's in the works.
Is it? Okay.
It's on my list, yes.
Need somewhere to sit, okay?
That's, that's.
Good weather.
That's another thing about where we live, you know, the rain, we get so much of it. It makes it so hard to do some of these projects. And the next one, or I guess I don't have it up there, um, but like the Campbell Park project, the swale. We got it started, it rained, our machines will sink this deep and we can't get in there, it's a swamp. You know, otherwise, that's, that thing would have been done in a heartbeat. My guys are good, you know, I'll admit it. Um, the other thing, Halloween, Christmas and setup events. Um, you know, to help make the ci- citizens feel like, you know, it's a festive time of year and, uh, you know, during the holidays. My guys are good at it, we've done it so many times that, they're like, okay, this goes here, this goes here.
So, lead us to that very last, uh, slide, uh, for the operations, uh, for future look and forward on what kind of projects we are working on and will be doing in the next few months.
Yeah, so, um, trying to look ahead, and some of this was from the storm water master plan. So, um, some of them, the numbers that they came up with through the consultants, we were like, whoa.
Yeah.
We can do this.
A lot better and cheaper, as you've seen, the kind of work and skill and equipment we have. So we're taking a lot of these projects out of the master planning. Through the budget processing, we're trying to find ways to think outside the box, innovation, operations excellence. How can we save the city money by doing what we can do in-house? And this is some of these projects that we set down, we have several meetings. We meet regularly with our team and leadership and we talk about them on a regular basis. And we prioritize and, you know, integrate the strategic plan, future plan, and how can we make this work to the best interest of the citizens. Yeah, again, yeah.
Perfect, no, that's perfect. And these are just a list of some of the ones that we're looking forward to doing.
I was really neat to hear that, that you guys are looking and like, wait a minute, whoa, man, oh no, we can do that for way less than that, that's, you know. Mr. Mayor, we know our area, you guys know that the city is, is.
Yeah, working with, working with engineering on some of these projects, um, knowing, talking to my guys and showing them this capital improvements on some of these projects and going, what do you think about this? You know, they want, they say this is gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars. And I go out, I price the pipe and everything, and we're like, you spend twenty, it's gonna be amazing.
Say this, you say, I'm running a marathon, not sprinting a race.
What you just said speaks to your guys' leadership because your team feels open and willing to talk to you about ideas and is willing to save the city money instead of just coming in, clocking in and clocking out. So thank you guys for that because that is, that's what it takes.
Well, I appreciate that and I'll let them know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I know we have more to report to go, but I, the, the million-dollar savings left out at me because, uh.
That's conservative, Council.
And I'd say over the past year, we've received during some time of public comment, um, comparison of, uh, one program uh, to, um, other departments in the city. I hope every citizen take the time to look at this report here because there is kind of a myth out there about, uh, public, uh, private industry being able to do things with much more efficiency and scale than, than the public, uh, public. So this is just puts the, the lie, the truth, the lie that. There are places, of course, where government does not want you to do, uh, what private industry can do better. But we do a hell of a good job in this city and it's, uh, I, I've always believed it that we've done that and I really appreciate the fact you're putting the, the numbers on this too. That we have, uh, excellent department leadership, we have excellent on the ground, under the ground, uh, work, doing stuff. That this, this city, uh, is a good manager of its money that's available to it and will continue to be that. So I just, uh, wanna, wanna say that, uh, say that, we got more, again, more engineering's coming up. But the fact is, uh, we, we serve our citizens and we will continue to serve our citizens well as, as a public entity. That leads to all of you.
Great comments, Patrick, and I think a lot of that is because of ownership. We own this town, don't we? We live here, we work here, and it's our town and we have pride in it. It isn't some, uh, corporation that's halfway across the world that we're working for. It's like right here, it's our ownership of this and it certainly shows with your pride.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
See, it wasn't so bad.
Yeah, you guys are easy on us.
Your mom and dad are smiling on you.
Oh.
Thank you. Part of the challenge, Mr. Mayor and Council members, last September when we met, I heard a lot of very positive comments from you all about the presentation, the leadership. And you know, you created a problem for me because I was thinking, how can I raise the body even higher? It's a, it's a challenge, it's, it's, it's not simple, takes a lot of, a lot of thoughts and work to come to this, you know, level. And I can tell you, without this crew behind me here, there is nothing as possible.
So what I just want to tell you guys, you're not off the hook yet because we got a lot of work to do to sell ourselves to the community about why we need to do the work to the streets and why your department needs to see this money. So, we'll be calling on you guys again.
Available twenty-four seven.
All right, all right, so, uh, next would like to have a familiar face again, Sharon Thoreau, our engineering department manager. We have some exciting, again, news to share and, uh, progress from last time we've met. And, uh, we'll go ahead to the next slide and Sharon.
Um, so I wanted to start by giving, uh, you, uh, an overview of all the services, um, and what engineering division does. We do a lot more than just civil design. So we, we do do a lot of civil engineering design, uh, project management and construction inspection. Um, and we are able to, with our small team, to design, uh, fairly complex projects. We start looking for consultants when, um, the project gets very complex and you need multi-disciplinary, um, full service. Basically, if you need like a geotag, structural, mechanical, uh, that's outside our capabilities and then we start looking for someone else. So when it comes to like sewer replacement, water line, uh, street storm, we can do those in-house. So to give you an example, since twenty fourteen, all of the water line replacements that have been done in the city, we've done all the design in-house for all of those since twenty fourteen. Um, and we've done it for, uh, most of the storm and the majority of the sewers as well. Um, we also administer, um, and bid out contracts, um, we have to follow state law on that, so, um, and I'm definitely getting everybody cross-trained so that you know how to do that as well. We have to follow certain rules regarding, um, contracting out projects and, um, for that, so, no, same slide.
Same slide.
Yeah, I'll go through the rest of it. So, uh, we manage the planning and improvement of city infrastructure, uh, that's through the master planning process, which, um, you guys have been familiar with now, we've been updating all of these plans that haven't been updated, uh, some since nineteen eighty-nine. Um, the storm, I think, was done last one in nineteen ninety-nine, maybe? Most recent was the water master plan that was done in twenty thirteen, so.
Just, and in the perspective of a timeline, it's already a major success if you secure one of those a year or two years. We've done three in less than, you know, all the master plan.
Um, our division also oversees, um, all the, the permitting work done in the public right-ofways. So that's the construction of driveways, sidewalks, um, anything occupying the right-ofway, we, uh, permit that and we oversee that, including like traffic control and stuff like that. Um, we also manage the expansion, um, of public improvements, um, done by private developers. We review those plans and then we, we, um, have performance bonds on them, make sure it's done right before we release those. Um, we also manage blasting permits, um, as well. Uh, make sure that, um, they have to do blasting survey, that they, uh, you know, notify everybody around, make sure to use masks to cover up any fly rock that might damage any passing vehicles or passersby. Uh, we also maintain all of the record drawings for the city and all the maps. Um, so if you're interested in looking at some real maps, you can always come up and visit us. Um, and actually, uh, Buck's team right now, they are, um, kind of revamping our storage room. Right now, we have masks that are just tossed in there, there's no rhyme or reason to it. And they're gonna, uh, build us a nice shelf so we can kind of get that organized, we can actually find things.
Nice.
Uh, we also, um, host utility coordination meetings every month with the PUD, Comcast, CenturyLink and, um, Northwest Natural. So we do that to kind of give them a heads up on what work, what work we're doing and just kind of coordinating stuff that we might need from them, they might need from us. And we do reporting to ODOT and to different agencies and we also provide support to other departments. So we provide maps, um, we work very closely with, obviously with everyone in Public Works, with Dave, Buck, Aaron, but we also do masks for the library, we've done masks for the police department. Um, and so, you know, which, we're really open to helping, um, anybody that, you know, needs a map or anything, so we're good at that. All right, so, as I mentioned, everything we're done is by a team of three. This is myself, Alice Bird, who started in February, and then Tim Underwood, which you guys know, Tim's been here, he's a senior member, he's been around for, I think, twenty years, I think, just about. Um, so, and so it seems impossible, but we are a really good team and we really support each other. And, um, so right now we're managing a total of thirty-five, um, projects, both public and private projects. Um, we do about, uh, two hundred and twenty, um, infrastructure permits, inspections, meaning inspecting sidewalks, um, water lines and what have you. We've done thirty right-of-way permits for the past, uh, few months, for the past year probably. And I want to stress that for performing that in-house design, I've calculated that for the past six months, we've already saved over fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we brought in over thirty thousand for just doing the plan reviews and public improvement permits. And since January, um, the previous it is, uh, we have not charged apparently ever for right-of-way permits. And so we started doing that and started bringing in revenue from that, so since January, brought over fourteen hundred dollars on that.
So this is a very important slide that we, as we move forward, but the numbers will shock you a little bit and we are working on making this a revamp of the personal engineering feature just.
So, um, we're working on updating our fees, which should be, um, on the next, uh, council agenda, but just to kind of give an update on that. The engineering fees have not been updated since two thousand and three. Um, and in addition to that, there was a lot of services that we've been providing that we were not charging for. Um, I'm not sure why, but we just weren't. And so when I calculated the estimated revenue loss, that was about one point two million dollars just for the last ten years of not charging and not increasing our fees to keep up with inflation as well as not charging for, um, certain services.
And you look at the comparables to all this, I mean, yeah, I mean, everything is not something that's pulled out.
Intensive study.
Right, yeah, yeah, studying and it's kind of seeing what similar sized cities and their charges.
People watching this.
Of course, of course, all this mayor work.
This is based.
Yeah.
Well thought.
And it's important because when we charge these fees, then we have less burden in our department on the enterprise funds. So the more we bring in, the more money that we have to actually do the project.
Projects that sustain the department and the equipment.
Yeah.
Again, these are.
And why is this kind of a burden, so why not charge for the services that pretty much everybody charged for?
And these are fees are in the resolutions that we should be charging for, but we haven't. And the losses, again, one.
Really, it's great customer service that they're getting zero, for zero cost. Zero cost.
Nothing is free. It shouldn't be.
Yes, but.
It takes three weeks sometimes to review an engineering plan.
Yeah, some of those they are, they're getting some information from, and I just, yeah, he happens to be there looking and.
Yeah.
Says, well, why, what?
The building department charged that, uh, us, do that, you know?
Yeah. So the example will be the blasting permits, we don't charge for blasting permits and we do an enormous amount of work for the blasting permits. I mean, we have to have the meetings, we have to review the survey. Uh, Tim has to sit down and review hundreds of videos that come in for each blast. Um, and so it is a lot of work and we have not charged for it ever. So that's gonna be one, that's gonna be, um, on the, the list there. So, next slide. So this is a, uh, kind of a short list of some of the goals we've accomplished for the past year.
The word is short list because we have a much bigger list to share, but in the interest of time, we want to limit.
Yeah. I know we're Kelly's, I'm gonna have to crew him. So, uh, we completed some water line improvements, um, uh, on Tuauton Street, those. Little Street, um, replaced some services on Deer Island Road and then kind of finished up doing the water line on North 7th. We had done it, uh, we started it a few years ago and then so we kind of pushed it up on the rest of the hill and, you know, everybody on that new line. Uh, we completed the wastewater and the store water master plan. So it's got adopted in November. Uh, we completed some asphalt patching, uh, last month. And that went really well. We abandoned some storm drain on Milton, Milton Way. And so basically it was an abandoned storm line, I think it was 24-inch storm line from Columbia to, uh, St. Helens on Milton. Um, and so we went ahead and abandoned those in place, filled them with, uh, flowable concrete. Um, the water master plan, um, will be up for adoption at the next council meeting. Um, and some other stuff that we have in the works is the Mercury TMDL implementation plan. So that is the, um, requirement from the EQ for the city. We have to implement this by September. And so, um, you'll be hearing more about that because you'll have a chance to review it and everything and then discuss it before, uh, we do a final on that. Um, in design, we've got some water main, water main replacements coming up. Um, we also managing the public improvements for the broadly for the Gable Road Apartments up there. Um, and, uh, just continuing to make sure that everybody's trained for a high-performing engineering team. Um, we are all now CISO, which is a certified erosion control and sediment, um, is that?
So, yeah, erosion.
Lead. So, um, everyone in our department is, uh, Tim and I just finished our certification, uh, two weeks ago. Alex came in with his. So now we're all certified to, uh, inspect any 1200C, uh, site.
So this is one of the areas where our entire team, including myself, got certified in this field. So we could go on the field ourselves and save on the cost of bringing an inspector from outside for all the erosion and sediment control for any construction site at the city. This will become extremely valuable as we break ground in industrial business park and the riverfront and all these projects that we can do it ourselves. We don't have to pay them.
So next slide. So, uh, just want to talk a little bit about increased efficiency and customer service. So it's, it is just three of us. And so one of the things that, um, I, I'm kind of definitely ensuring is that we're all cross-trained. And that's something that wasn't being done before. I mean, prior to, um, you know, beginning of the year, you kind of just, you know, everybody kind of did your own thing in engineering and there was no cohesion. And so we have actual meetings, uh, team meetings every Monday morning. And it's pretty comprehensive. We go through all of our projects and kind of highlight where we are, what everybody's doing. Um, you know, kind of celebrate wins. We do that too, like this is some good stuff that we've had going on last week. Um, and cross-training. So basically if somebody's out sick or can't come in, you know, the work doesn't sit and wait. I can go out and do an inspection for Tim. Alex can go do an inspection for Tim. Um, if I can't get to a permit, Alex and Tim both know how to do the permits now instead of just one person. Uh, so that's been working out really, really well. Um, also we've updated the webpage so that, um, it's more user-friendly for engineering and people can easily find the standard detail drawings, um, the master plans. When they're adopted, we were putting them up there prior to, um, these updated ones. They were not available to the public, but these are documents that should be. And then we also, um, created, uh, with IT's help, a general engineering email address, which is linked to the website now. So if there's an email that comes in, all three of us will get the email. And so there's no miscommunications on that. So project highlights, um, so this is some pictures from the water line project we did on Tuolton and Little Street. We basically replaced some old, uh, leaky two-inch, um, galvanized, um, water lines with six-inch ductile iron. Um, and one of the ways that we, um, just to kind of give a background on how we select these projects, Dave and I work together and we kind of come together every few months and then kind of, kind of upstate me, updates me on like, this is where the lines are really bad and leaking. So that's how we prioritize them. We're not just coming off of the top right hand with them. We're kind of trying to hit those lines that are really, really bad. So this was some of the ones on that list there. Asphalt trench patching, uh, basically just kind of, you know, paving all of these old patches that are beat up all around this city and getting all those done. We did about, I think, uh, 6,500 square feet on this project. And then this is some pictures of the storm drain abandonment. Uh, the bottom left picture is where we're, um, filling that old sewer. We also replaced, uh, an old odd-shaped, uh, um, storm, uh, manhole in front of the wastewater treatment plant with a standard manhole. The other one, just, it was just a really weird way that the, the grate, the frame fit on there and stuff. So we just got rid of it first.
With this particular picture, I'd like really to highlight the complexity and the danger of this type of work that this team do. Again, the equipment, the skill set. It's not your average Joe job where you can go in and start fiddling with this stuff. It's really required a skill pool team to be able to manage, lead and execute this.
And so coming, uh, um, is this sewer capacity, everybody kind of knows about that. We talked about that the last time, uh, we had a meeting. So, um, working on that and should have, uh, something for better discussion, um, if not at the next council meeting, then the following one. And so, and then water master plant coming up as well. That one's going to be kind of focused on fire flows, low-pressure areas and, um, seismic and making sure that, um, the system is seismic resilient so that if there is an earthquake, that we still can provide, uh, water service to the community. And so for the future, so this is what we kind of have coming up. And so the engineering fee update, that's going to be kind of a more recent one. We also are going to start working on updating the engineering design manual. Probably quite some time. Uh, the standard detail, um, those have not been updated in probably 30 years, some of them. And so Alex has already, already gotten working on that. So he's already working on that and he's really, really good and really, really fast. So, not really well. Um, we're also going to develop, uh, some CAD standards, um, and, uh, require developers when they submit plans so that we have some of the systems coming in. Um, it's been kind of a, a people mind for years, you know, you, you get documents in and everything is different. And then we have to spend a whole lot of staff time trying to get it to fit into our system. So, um, that's one thing that we're going to start working on is that when we get in that information, it's consistent. We should be able to just pop it right into our AutoCAD or an RGIS system. Uh, also working on, um, pavement management system, working with Tim on that. And, uh, want to start exploring some grant opportunities to start funding some of our projects. And then, um, engineering career, career day, that's something that we want to do. Um, and start reaching out to the local community. If there's a lot of kids here and maybe someone might be interested in coming around here and finding out if this is something that they might be interested in doing. And, um, actually, Councilperson, you know, we talked about it at the planning commission, doing one for the elementary school.
We're not doing ours until next year.
Oh, okay.
But I do want to talk about maybe having you come and talk in our class or something. Anyways, yeah, sorry.
So I think that's, um.
Great. Thank you so much, Sharon. I appreciate it. This is, Mr. Mayor, council member, Public Works is a powerhouse. Okay. It's the largest department in the city with the most complicated and responsible job in the city, uh, fair. I couldn't be prouder to have been selected to run this department, working under your leadership. And to make all this happen is working with this leadership team over here because we as a team make things work. Again, that's collaboration with all other departments, including planning, communication, finance, everybody in the city. Uh, we are so proud and we, we take that honor and pride chip in making these things work. This was just a glimpse of what goes on in Public Works on a daily basis from every single department. There is so much more. I haven't even talked about the first and trans street. They haven't talked about the industrial business park. I haven't talked about reservoir. You already know about that. There is so much going on in San Antonio that is, is great. And again, all this achievement is for the citizens and the community under a great leadership overall. That takes me to my very last segment and thank you for listening at your patient this afternoon. Uh, there were a couple of questions about, uh, the city water system leakage from that session that I listened to last time when I was on vacation. So I thought I'll put a couple of slides to at least give you an idea of where we stand and what's going on. So that big meter that you saw, uh, sorry, Kathy, this is actually one of our existing meters. It's a master meter. We have quite a few of these and you can tell on this particular one, look at the gauge, look at the, uh, the numbers looks like a car odometer. You know, they're not one of those sophisticated, great one that does ultrasonic technology where it tells you a lot. So to give you just an idea of, uh, our existing conditions, uh, on this coming slide, the city owns roughly between 400 and 500 to 5,000 meter across the entire city. These meters are kind of complicated when it comes to really, uh, functionality because we are constantly running into replacing them on patches, right? We have one day 100 meters that blows off that we have to replace. Sometimes we have 200, so we'll be trying to stay consistent, working closely with Dave and our team to have enough on the inventory, uh, so we can replace them where we didn't have to shut someone's water or not having these bills paid. However, that process have been really complicated with the COVID and the shortage and the inventory. And if we make an order today, we might receive it in six months. So how can we stay ahead of the curve? Uh, reading the mirrors is labor intensive. That sometimes can take a week. We don't have the technology that can reach the mirror, you know, automation through radio technology. So that takes some time. That takes some two crew members out of a job site so they can go read meters once a month. And, uh, this is kind of where we are. So, Councilperson, your question, I think, was how come we didn't look at it and the master plan brought this up? Let me assure you, we have been ahead of the curve. Before even the master plan process, we have been in talk, in meetings. I met, actually, I initiated this meeting with our finance director, Matt Brown. I told him, give me some numbers. And, you know, we worked together to find what's the leakage in our system existing. And we looked at some potential, you know, 30% or more, already we're losing through our outdated infrastructure. What have we done to mitigate that? We spent at least, uh, a good of six-month meeting with all the top three companies here in the United States to learn about what mirror technologies available, uh, what kind of mirrors are available outside, what can we do to improve our system? How can we improve this leakage and, you know, take this to the next level? So we've had, as I mentioned, few meetings. Uh, we had a lot of demos. We looked at a lot of options. And we conducted an in-depth review of everything that is available. All this had been done already prior that topic comes up and even the water master plan. We've been proactively working towards a solution. And, uh, what we end up having is, uh, next slide, please. Looking at the best of this, so there is this what you call the ultrasonic technology, uh, meters, which are highly functional and those are able to detect the water flow through this ultrasound. Can give you an extremely accurate read, but also what gives you any areas of potential deficiencies such as water leakage, you are able to calculate and zoom down to the area where you might have a problem and fix that, right? And we've been looking at those and we even selected some product. And we had a execution plan to replace our entire system way before the master plan. The problem was looking at, this is, uh, if we go one slide back, if you see the city, we tried to look at it from a comprehensive way, whether we replace the entire system at once or we divide the city into four quadrant and start replacing those in phases. And I have submitted an attachment for you so you know about the cost involved into this replacement, whether we do it as a phase or whether we do it as a comprehensive deal. And that's the only reason we haven't gone here because this is actually extremely expensive. If we go to the, one more slide, please. This is first of all, the dual technology we talked about. There's AMR or AMI systems out there that this not only can save us ton of work on the backend from our team where they have to drive around. These system are radio controlled, meaning you can read those remotely. We talked about strategic location for antenna. As I said, we've done a lot of work behind the scene way before we even talked about the master plan. And, you know, the bottom line, we came up with the, next slide, it will show you, there are two systems. If we do half deployment, the cost of this AMI system is almost a million dollar. And if we do a full deployment system, it's 1.5 million dollars. And those basically kind of, we're still in discussion. In fact, I have a meeting next Friday with one of the companies again to add potential way of deployment and the phases. And it's a matter of really pushing the trigger on this one and execute and replace the entire system or phase it up. So what I wanted to highlight in this specifically topic is we have been looking at it. We have been proactively engaging into discussion and solutions. We just didn't push the trigger simply because of budget and we're trying to figure out the best way to get it. So it's in the works. It might come up very soon. Rest assured, we're looking at all aspect of it and not to be worried about something like that being missed out because we really look at everything. With that said, the last couple of slides I'd like to talk about, you've heard from our amazing team here. I want to highlight a couple, few members who, again, when I came to the city, these folks over here, uh, have stood up to the challenge. So there has been a lot of internal, uh, promotions. Sharon Duru, she was a project manager. She's currently the engineering department manager. And you've seen the progress she have made since that promotion and even prior. Aaron Cantor is our water quality division manager. We have worked towards, uh, combining the two facilities and we have cross-trained and eliminated extra position over time and technology, which have served the city extremely well so far. Facilities and Joe Maintenance, Buck Tupper, been here for about, I think, six, seven years. And he has, uh, done a lot of great work to go up to the challenges at play. I mean, all these promotions are really well-earned. They, I told the team from there I got here. If you work hard, our work pays. There is no substitute for that. If you want to excel under my leadership, I will support you. I will mentor you. I will help you to get to the next level, but you have to put the work. And this team, I can tell you, they have gone above and beyond all of you. And the last but not least, he's not here, Mr. Ethan Sterling. The very first day I arrived at the city, uh, he impressed me with a very great project that he randomly was talking about for an emergency, emergency management for the water levels when I came here. And, you know, just listening and observing, I knew he is talented. He's great. He's smart. He just was not given that opportunity. And I think we worked for over a year and a half and he continued to impress and do his great work that he does. And he recently was promoted to the field and safety supervisor. And of course, Dave Elder, you know, the next promotion is my job, really. There is no, there was no other way for him to go up. He is so senior, I mean, can teach us all. So you know, lots of credit for you. And with that said, we would like from, to thank you from our Public Works family for listening and your patient, Sheri, right there is, she's in the middle. And this is about 90% of our team. We had few folks who were out between vacation sickness and all that. I couldn't get everybody. Many thanks to, uh, Crystal and Cameron from Communication who, to the time, this was one day after the snowstorm. And we weren't sure we're going to make it or not, but she still put the efforts and the energy. We came, we got a boom truck and we gathered as many of our team members to basically give you an idea who's in the department, who's on the crew, does the work and, uh, any questions, happy to answer. I know it took a while, but thank you for listening and thank you again for your support.
Great report. And thank you individually for your individual, uh, work.
There's one thing that you kind of forgot. You mentioned how good the cleanup alone roof 30 looks. And a lot of people see that. Your s- street sweeper cleans up a lot of the city and it looks good. And people see it, but don't realize you cleaned it up. The importance of keeping everything clean is really been understated. Because people also try to clean some of the stuff up, but you've done it. And, uh, I don't know how you pat yourself on the back because it doesn't seem like it's a particularly big deal, but the impression that it gives the rest of the world is surprising to go over.
Thank you, Council.
And that you should be thankful.
Thank you. Thank you. We, as again, the pride, I, the pride piece of our work is we do this really for the citizen. We're not expecting anything in the back. You know, from my leadership role, I definitely make sure our team is taken care of, respected, appreciated, rewarded when the time comes. Everybody knows that and we've done a lot. That's from my side. As for the citizens, all we need is to have a safe, uh, community and provide all that amenities for the vulnerability and, you know, the best level of service we can provide.
Um, I have a question. So I was just curious about which departments are you planning on implementing the internship programs?
So initially, we talked about engineering and the water quality division. As we talked in the past, we had those positions basically approved by the city council. However, we cannot put few things on hold for now until we go through the budget. And as I said, of, you know, what can we do to save the budget and make sure we are in good standing? We do a lot of sacrifices here and there, but whatever it takes, but those were in the.
I would just want to say congratulations again to you for your certification for management. And what I could say is that it starts from the top. It filters down to the guys and you got buy-in from them all because you have continued to do the work yourself on your end and applaud them to do their, say it's yours here. I'm with it. And we've got here today a really great presentation, a bunch of great leaders in our community. And it makes a big difference.
Thank you, Mr.
It does. It just makes a big difference.
It's so hard. And any way we can improve, we can.
I think there's been a big, huge traumatic, dramatic change in the public works. Just to feel the vibe, it it just, it seems very much different and I appreciate each and every one of you guys very much. Doug and I oversee administration and public works and you guys. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I think you stick around for just a minute.
And then one, one request in the, from Buck is the nineteen twenty-nine truck, the chain driven, that it just be ready for the parade. I'm sure it is too.
Make sure it starts.
Much to go wrong with that thing. Okay, so let's get out of here, but let's get on with the discuss appoint someone to do the traffic. Doug for presentation.
I've got a couple of minutes and I asked Mohammed to stick around here for a second. And as you recall, several meetings ago, I got a call from Len Kehoe and she wanted, she wanted us to replace the individual who was on the traffic safety committee and represented the city. And so I brought that to, to the council to think about and to the staff. I asked the staff to possibly appoint someone or whatever. And so I see this on the agenda and guess who I called? I called, I called the, the well, Clumby County Courthouse because this is a county position. And the county, the county position, I said, is a, an advisory position. And the advisory committee openings that are available now are with ambulance service, citizen transportation, civil service, the fair board, jail operating advisory committee, local public safety, planning, solid waste and traffic safety. Well, the one that we had representation on was traffic safety. And so I got back to make a sheet. She says, you know, we really need someone to advise the advisory committee from your city. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of roads that, that are in our city that are count, under, kind of under county jurisdiction or ownership or whatever, or there are some anyway, in Oak Gable Road. And I don't know if that transition is there. But there was a person who was working here and she, she represented the city's concerns. And but that committee apparently leaned on that, on, on her for advice. So I called up Mohammed. I says, you know, there's this position open. And it's a committee, it's a committee of about fifteen people. And it's, you serve on this committee for two to four years. And I don't know really if there's, we really have to search. Lynn told me that it's more whoever we ask to be there is going to advise the advisory committee. So that's why I call Mohammed, because who's better, in a better position to advise as you. So what Mo gave me was a name of a person who has just been hired. And I would like you to say a bit about Alex Bird, showing you would select him to be our spokesman for the city. Of course, in a very collaborative way. And I like the collaboration between the city and the county. This is a cool thing to have.
Absolutely, yeah.
Someone on our city represent us in a county position. And so can you elaborate just a little about Alex?
Yes, of course. So first of all, I've had a couple of conversations with Lynn in the past and I, I had a very good understanding of what this committee does, right? Especially from the traffic safety arena. As you mentioned, we had a representative in the past and then that void from the city representation was not there. So I can go back one step as, you know, they say hiring is talent, right? I am very proud to have brought a very, very solid individual team member, Alex Bird, to our team. Great engineer. I couldn't be happier with that decision that we've made. And then Alex have proven himself in the past few months to be a solid, really good, excellent engineer that I can with confidence trust his decision-making ability and under the direction as well of myself. And Sharon has proven himself. The most important piece of this committee representation from the engineering side is Alex happened to have his PE professional engineering license in transportation. So that's kind of like you're talking about perfect world, right? Ideal examples. Doesn't happen often. So nobody could have been better representation from a background in transportation and traffic from the city standpoint to part of this committee. Now, where also he can play a great role, as Sharon mentioned to you. We have a very comprehensive meeting every single week in Monday morning. And you are welcome to stop by the engineering department and you look at our big wall with hundreds of projects that we visit every single week all together as a team, a part of that team. So Alex is up to date on every single project. He can be a great value. In fact, he will bring a new dimension to this committee by what we have implemented and the amount of information he can share with this committee. So he truly would be a great one to the committee and as well a great benefit to the committee as a representation from the city. And of course, I'll be working with him and Sharon closely to make sure any concern from the committee is conveyed through our meetings and he would be a great channel between us and the committee for future.
I've got a contact for you. That's great advice. And I, this is just a, this is what public works leadership is doing. They hop right on it. And yeah, collaboration with the county, yeah, that's great. It's perfect. And so I can't thank you enough. And then I will get the contact information for you to give the county a, a call or get an application for Alex. And he could go over and meet the, the staff of the people who are ahead of the advisory committees. And that would be perfect.
We already met. We talked already after we spoke and he is, couldn't be more excited. And this is a great, again, opportunity for Alex himself to also learn about the city, the inner agency, government, collaboration as well. It's a great, any way you look at it. So, yeah, we're ready to go. Just send that.
Thank you. I can't thank you enough.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Okay, so Don's report is informational only. No, no, exactly the same stuff. See you guys at seven.
We don't have any four meetings before seven o'clock meeting this day.
To get dinner.
Okay, so read this. She wants, yeah, she wants you to read it. She put now on seven and then she's going to be back at seven.